Good evening. I will call this meeting to order. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Regan?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Marone?
Here.
All right, on to the consent agenda. So, a couple of announcements before we get to the consent agenda. Items 3E-A and 3EB should have been their own items, so we're moving those to 3O and 3P, and we're withdrawing 3M. In addition, if you're paying attention at home, item number 15, which was my item on the council budget process, we're taking off the agenda, or I'm withdrawing it for today. We'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we approve or accept can set agenda items 3A through 3P with the exception of 3M, which was withdrawn.
Second. All right, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number six, discussion of old business. Mr. Farrell, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
Well, it tells me she is meeting with the attorney on the other side sometime next week, trying to work it out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. On to item number seven. Oh, I'm sorry, items removed from the consent agenda. We don't have any items. That's item number four, and then item number five is public question and answer. Do we have any comments for the public question and answer? Mr. Comerford?
Bill Comerford, Broadview Drive. A question through the chair to the mayor. Did you happen to see the repair works on the hallway that was done maybe two months ago?
I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about.
There was big chunks of the wall that had flaked and fallen off. It's been like that for probably maybe two years or better. I've been bringing it up for at least 10 years, and then apparently somebody either through Public Works or Public Works hired somebody to do that repair. I wasn't know if you were aware of that and if you were happy with the work and the performance of the work that was done.
Is that the stairwell work?
Yeah, the stairwell work.
My understanding is that after it cured quite some time, I think it bubbled. So there's an underlying issue below the work that wasn't resolved. So we'll be investigating that and trying to find the cause of the problem.
Okay, so did we pay the contractor for what was done, the repair?
I'll have to find out.
Okay, so we'll know next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public question and answer? Okay, moving on. Item number seven.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we approve the appropriation of funds in the amount of $149,332 from opioid settlement account ending 4/5/2000 to opioid settlement account ending in 1/01/80.
Second. Okay, and Ms. Brande, would you like to step up?
Good evening. Mandy Miranda, Director at Youth and Social Services.
Good evening. Vanessa Batista, Director of Health, Health Department.
Thank you very much. Questions on this item? So I had two questions. One was, we're spending $90,000 on part-time drug counselors. So what number of drug counselors is that, and how much treatment do we expect to get done? Like, I'm not certain what the pay scale is for a drug counselor, right? So 90,000, if you could just explain a little bit.
So we're looking at $30 to $35 an hour. It's part-time, looking for two years, additional two years from what we have now, using this money. She's providing prevention work as well as counseling families, youth, adults. Her caseload's pretty busy. She's working three, she's got Fridays and Saturdays. She's got daytime appointment hours on Saturdays and then Tuesday evenings.
And so she's, this is the second half of the money, so she's an existing employee at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and September, October?
Okay.
She came on? Yes.
And the other item in there was Narcan purchases. How many units of Narcan do you intend to purchase?
As needed, I would say right now, depending on the trainings we conduct. Right now, we have, we do trainings quarterly, but part of that money is also going into the Community Health Improvement Plan, which is $26,232.
Okay, so because when the Coalition was here, when they got their award from the ARPA money, they had a substantial investment in Narcan. So does any of this overlap? Do you have access to any of their supply?
No.
So I guess my concern, just in general, is, you know, there's like a four-year shelf life, and it just seems like we've spent a lot of money on something. I'm not sure what our consumption is of such.
Yeah, we're not planning to buy a lot of Narcan.
Okay.
Because, again, the Coalition for a Better Wallingford does Narcan training.
Right.
So we wouldn't do as many. If anything, we would partner with them to do the training.
Okay, so the money that is in this item is for the training or for the actual Narcan?
For the Narcan, but we're not purchasing a lot of Narcan kits.
Okay.
Just, I mean, I don't have a specific number right now. It says needed. We would have that discussion with the Coalition for a Better Wallingford to see how many they have and then go from there.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Mandy, I want to thank you for the services that your offices renders, you know. As you know, I work with a lot of families that are in distress, and, you know, your actively, your office is actively working with some kids that are having some very difficult situations, so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Dealing with the Narcan thing, though, on the backup, it does show, it's expected there's going to be an expenditure of $26,232.
Yep, but part of that is Community Health Improvement Plan. So we're not looking to spend the majority of that money for the Narcan kits. We're looking to spend the majority of that money to, for the Community Health Improvement Plan, which basically what it is, is we completed a community health assessment last year in 2023, and then as part of that process, we're mandated by the state of Connecticut to complete a Community Health Improvement Plan. And that's where most of the money is, will go to help, hiring a company to help complete this Community Health Improvement Plan.
So am I to understand that was a directive from the state in there for an unfunded mandate making you come up with this plan but not funding it?
Well, if we don't hire assistance, then my health department staff would have to do it. But this is to seek out assistance to complete the Community Health Improvement Plan.
Okay, and of the $26,000, because you did say you didn't have a intent right now...
Specific for the number of Narcan kits, yep.
Yeah, so am I to understand that really you're spending like $25,000 on this plan?
Probably, and maybe like 1,000, or maybe at the most 2,000 for the Narcan kits and the Narcan emergency cabinets, because we are expecting to buy two of those. One for the town building and then another one for the old fire department house across Sheehan High School, which is our MRC building.
I really wish that folks would get together and collaborate on this, because, you know, we did talk with Coalition a lot, and if I recall correctly, there was like 1,000 Narcan kits that they were saying that they were purchasing, so. But are we anticipating hire, like, hiring individuals to come up with this plan, or is there a service out there? There's not a lot of backup here.
Yeah, so it's a series of worksheet templates that my staff would have to complete. We would get a contractor, they would study our plan, and basically review to see if it's effective, form our own organization, because we did it back, I believe we had a Community Health Improvement Plan back in 2017. So since we had the new Community Health Assessment Plan completed last year, we need a new Community Health Improvement Plan based on the recent Community Health Assessment Plan.
And how much did it cost back in '17? Because I don't recall this coming across our desk.
Yes, because the health department did it themselves, but the Community Health Assessment Plan was, I believe Data Haven was contracted to complete that plan.
And are you anticipating going down that same line this time?
Well, we did already complete the Community Health Assessment Plan, and we paid Data Haven to do that for us, and we have that plan completed already. But as part of that process, now we have to complete a Community Health Improvement Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tava?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So after the two years, if this money runs out, then what happens to that position, the social worker position?
We'll have to assess and see kind of where things are at, at that point in time.
Okay, because I know we had a lot of this with budget season with ARPA money, and, you know, we, there were certain departments that hired people, and then you knew the money was going to run out, and then when it did run out, all of a sudden it's a huge surprise that, you know, we have to lay people off, and it was because we used the money that we knew was going to run out. So, okay, this, so this, this $90,000 for the part-time social worker, this was not in the budget, or it was as an existing position?
No, no. It was not in, yeah, it was never in the budget.
Okay.
So that position was strictly paid by the last, the first round of the opioid money that we received.
Okay, so it's an existing position but always paid for with the opioid settlement money?
Correct.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I was asking about the, my questions were about the Narcan too, because I know we gave the Coalition, I think a lot of us were questioning the amount of Narcan that we gave them ARPA money for, so hopefully if we can, you know, we just don't want to duplicate where we're, you know, we're giving your department money, we're giving them money, and, you know, everybody has it, but nobody's using it. So I know you work closely with them, so hopefully we can just coordinate and make sure we're not spending money on things we need.
Yeah, we actually do training with them. We collaborate with them, and our health educators are trained to do Narcan training as well, as well as the Wallingford Coalition.
Okay.
So we'll just have to have a discussion as to see how many Narcan kits they have.
Great. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can, that's exactly where I was going. I mean, we're all talking about purchasing Narcan in all these places, and can we get an inventory of who's got what Narcan? I mean, I know police have it, fire have it, Coalition has it, health department, more than likely.
Well, we don't have any right now.
Okay, well, maybe that's a concern. I don't know if Youth and Social Services has any.
No, we don't.
Well, that's a concern also. I mean, I would expect that the staff over there is trained, you know, certainly when somebody calls my office and they've got a drug issue, I usually send them to you. I mean, I don't, I don't even think of sending them to the health department. So I think it would be helpful for us if we knew who's got it and how many and all that stuff, so. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basic question, are we better off having too much Narcan or not enough?
Well, as you mentioned before, that it does have an expiration date.
Understood, but in order to save somebody's life in a situation...
I would say it definitely wouldn't hurt having too much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a discussion, possible action regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wallingford and UP SCU Local 42417. Good evening, Mr. Hutt.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Hutt, Town HR Director. I'm here tonight to seek the council's approval for a three-year contract with the management union, the contract to run from January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2026. The tentative agreement that was reached includes wages effective and retroactive to January 1, 2024 of 2%, January 1, 2025 of 2.5%, and January 1, 2026 of 2.5%. Also provides for effective and retroactive to January 1, 2024, wage adjustments for various positions in the utilities, the public utilities. I did provide that in a memo, May 16 of 2024. It also includes effective and retroactive to January 1, 2024, increase of $3,000 in each step for pay grades 1 through 18, listed in Article 33, Section 3 of the contract, the current contract. Amends the job posting period to five working days, amends the wage differential from one year to nine months with a three-year extension for workers' comp injuries, increases the number of vacation days for employees in the one-to-two-year and three-year-to-five-year service ranges. It also provides for health insurance changes, co-pay changes for the PPO plan of $70 for specialists, $1,000 per house, per hospital admission, $250 emergency room visit. It also provides for health insurance premium cost share, effective 7121 increases to 17.5% and then effective 7126, it's 18%. And also changes to REX co-pays, those are increasing from 103550 to 105075 effective July 1, 24, and then effective July 1, 26. It adds a fourth tier with 50% co-insurance capped on $125 per prescription for specialty medications. It's two days of family sick leave from three to five days, and it's a three-year contract duration. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions for Mr. Hutt? All right, seeing no questions and no motion, I think you're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, number nine?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appropriation of funds in the amount of $350,000 to revenue federal grant account ending in 4/5/2000 and to ARPA municipal Pond Hill Boilers account ending in 5/8/830.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Carmody?
I just have a question. Do we know how much ARPA money we have left?
If this gets approved, just a little under $950,000.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Members of the public? Back to the council, Mr. Fishbein?
Yeah, I just wanted, I, the general public probably heard the motion, but my understanding is this is to repair and fix and replace the boilers at Pond Hill School. Is that correct?
To my understanding. Is that correct? Yes. I'm going to nod from the super.
Yeah, I just think the general public should know that, and I'm in support of the motion, so.
Thank you. They have a dire situation at Pond Hill with the boilers, so this should ameliorate it. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes, motion passes. Item number 10.
Mr. Chairman, if we may do 10 and 12 together, if that's okay?
Please.
So I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute's Section 1-206B regarding strategy in negotiations with respect to a pending claim in the matter of Ford Motor Company and Town of Wallingford Department of Police Services, and pursuant to Section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statute, which is with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second. Our motion's made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in executive session. If we could please clear the chamber, and the members of the Board of Education are invited to stay. clear the chamber, and the members of the Board of Education are invited to stay. All right, I will call this meeting back to order. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We're now back in regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the action regarding the pending claim of Ford Motor Company and Town of Wallingford Department of Police Services as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. On to number 13. Discussion of possible action regarding the Simpson Court outdoor dining. Mayor.
So we are aware that there is a desire to have the parking spaces in front of Gaetanos going down or up north to the end of the parking lot for outdoor dining. They seem to be making that request. It's a council decision, you know, whether or not to allow the exclusive use with the mafia blocks. You know, at the request of one counselor, I looked into what a reasonable value if the council were to entertain a lease of the space. I asked our tax assessor, and his thought was $150 per month for each parking space. So, but it's up to the council. You know, there seems to be some support in the room.
Okay. Questions from the council? Mr. Lathan.
Thank you. So my position on this is the same as it was last year. I'm in favor of this in exchange for some sort of payment or lease of the spaces. I'm fine if the assessor says it's $150 a space a month. I think it's just, I think it's prudent for the council, for the government, to not just give government land to be used in a business transaction without some, because we can't do that for everybody. So there's, I think there's got to be something, and I'm okay with that being that. If I need to read more of my notes would not financially benefit from the payment. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, there, there wouldn't be a mechanism for that, no.
So I guess, I mean, trying to get everybody together on this, you know, we, the only time we've run into something like this that I can sort of analogize is we had talked about changing the, the name of High Street over in Yalesville to get rid of the conflict with mail. And the administration at that point demanded that a petition be signed by those that would be affected in support of that before we could get down that road. So, you know, I would, I think it's more incumbent upon us to make sure that those that are occupying, that are paying rent in that area assent, you know, because I guess there, one could argue there's maybe a benefit to those businesses. But I know we got one email from one business owner there, I think it was the business owner, who said that they're negatively impacted and they rented their place with the understanding that they had parking out front. I got another correspondence from somebody that talked about all the money that the town put into redoing the back parking lot and, you know, doesn't do that for many other businesses without the businesses that occupy a lot of the spots in front having to pay that much. I think their buy-in on that situation was $10,000 per property owner, you know, which has been an issue also with the utilization of that parking. You know, if you're going to start to block off spots and while there's a payment, but it doesn't go to those that are negatively impacted, are you going to allow those that are working those places to take up those prime spots? I mean, that's something we talked about through the Simpson Court thing. So, I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces here, but at the end of the day, we created the outdoor dining ordinance, I think in 2013. I was up here then, which expanded the ability of the restaurants to do that. And, you know, I know there's been problems with access and compliance and all that stuff. So I, I do recognize the community aspect, you know, it's almost like a park there. Especially, I mean, I've been there on Thursday nights, you know, and I see, I hear the music and I see the people enjoying, you know, but then we have the aspect of the handicap parking, which is, is moved away from where it was originally designed and moved to a different area in there. So, I, I'm, you know, when you say there's going to be a payment and that veils a concern, but I thought the intent of the payment was to financially compensate those that were losing and that couldn't. You know, the bank that's on the corner isn't going to put tables out there, you know, can't utilize that. You've got the, the spa, they, you know, they're right adjoining that area. You know, you've got the offices upstairs, you know, that I know have used that area. So, you know, I think as part of the discussion, if you're going to talk about maybe a portioning of, of payment that is made by those that are using this to those that can't or won't use it, maybe that's a discussion to be had. But those are my comments at this time. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only way I can, I can address this is a little bit of storytelling and I'm going to ask everybody to at least come along with me on my, the way my brain works, apologize in advance for that. But I think, I think, hopefully it's worthwhile. I look at the situation from where it started and where it is and what we're trying to achieve, what the, what the hopes are, the, the, we're hearing from people that are excited about what happens uptown. That's what it's all about. They're excited about what's happening uptown and like, look at this, how cool this is. Look how exciting this is. So, I acknowledge that and then I step back and say, what is it that people are excited about? So I need to go to the history and we know that during the pandemic, and I was around, you know, when Counselor Fishbiden was around, when we first approved the, you know, outdoor dining, sidewalk dining, I was extremely excited about that. I apologize. And that goes back a long way. And that's a big part of the fabric of a downtown. You know, you walk through downtown Wallingford and you're, you're in any other city. You've got sidewalk tables and every restaurant has the ability to do that. Please remember that. That's sidewalk dining. That's outdoor dining. We put a lot of thought into that and we've adjusted it at times. We were even arguing about what could go on umbrellas in the beginning, but we wanted to make sure this worked right. So every restaurant can utilize the sidewalk in order to have outdoor dining and it, some areas it works better than others because of the space allowed, but it's a really nice feature for every business and that means everybody has equal access to it. So that was outdoor dining. And then we had the pandemic and I don't recall exactly how this all came about, but we approved the use of Simpson Court a few years back for additional outdoor dining. And at that point, we went from sidewalk dining to parking lot dining. And I'm only using those two phrases so we can keep them separate. We said, this would be good. And we allowed the, a large, a substantial portion of the parking lot to be closed off and utilized for additional outdoor dining because indoor dining was pretty much not even an option. And it was successful to an extent. Out of that, developed the fun stuff. And this is, it's important that we recognize this. Out of that, we, we found one of our local heroes who, you know, who started coming in and providing some entertainment because there was a little room to put it in. Everybody said, and that's Wallingford, we take advantage of opportunities to have a good time, to be a community. And we said, oh, we could, we started bringing music in. And it started getting everybody excited and they started coming in more. So now there's this whole additional celebrate Wallingford kind of vibe happening on Thursdays. Right? Aside from the Wednesday night parties on the parade ground, there's this whole groove going on. And that was really nice. So, and I think that is what everybody is hoping to continue. But they're, they're relating, they're conflating that with outdoor dining. So I looked at this and I thought, what is really is the entertainment? The camaraderie, the music, the gathering dependent upon shutting down the parking lot for tables for one or two restaurants whom I love. This is not easy for me. And I'm not necessarily against this. I'm just sharing with my thoughts on what I'm trying to go through here. We have a large area where we have taken out, and I wish someone would clarify for me, is it eight to 10 spaces that we shut down? All right? And we put tables in there. Now the tables are really just for those establishments that are there, one or two. Are, is the dancing, the music depending upon those tables being in the parking lot? Or are they an accoutrement to that? Are they in addition to that? Everybody's, I'm hearing so many people saying, everybody's walking around up there because of the music and the fun and they're going to other places. Would they not do that if there was not music? I understand that. Would they do that if there was still music, but not tables in Simpson Court? But I ask why? People are dancing among the tables? No, I'm just, I know we can't go back and forth. Let me just throw out my thought pattern.
Kenny, hang on one second.
Yes.
Mr. Testa has the floor, so I understand he's asking in sort of a question answer format, but kindly don't shout at him.
They're kind of rhetorical. So, and if you disagree with me, I respect that. What I'm, I'm throwing out everything. If we were to have set aside an area where we could still provide the entertainment, would not everybody come uptown and enjoy the entertainment? Does the entertainment dependent, don't, please just listen, is the entertainment dependent on tables blocked in in front of a restaurant? Those tables are there for the restaurant. People could still dance on the sidewalk. We could still block off and I don't know if it's going to work. I'm saying this is what I'm, this is what I'm arguing about in my own head. If that bothers you, I'm sorry, but it's my job to be fair to the whole town and I'm trying to be that. And I'm trying to look at the big picture. I'm trying to acknowledge that the excitement is not about five tables in front of one restaurant. It's about the, the music and the fun that's evolved, evolved, which could still occur with changes. It could still occur. If it can't occur, then okay. I'm just throwing it out there. It's a big decision. I'm, please, I, I know we can't go back and forth. It's not allowed. You'll have, believe me, I want to hear what you have to say. Like, I think. But you see where I'm going with this? And I would say, I look at, I look at the park and I, and I look at the parking lot and I say, well, first of all, the, the real corner of it, we could easily shut that down, let Johnny pull his truck, his, his car in and have the music every Thursday night and open the things up and have fun. And everybody could dance on the front lawn at the library in front of the sidewalks and have all fun. But the dining is still limited to the sidewalks as it always was. That doesn't require shutting down the, the parking lot. All I'm getting at is the music, the fun, the gathering does not require shutting down the parking lot. Allowing tables in the parking lot requires shutting down the parking lot. And that's where we're having a problem. So I look at all the other businesses and they say Thursday nights, Thursday nights are great. What about Monday morning, Tuesday morning, Thursday, Wednesday morning? Those things are blocked off all the time. So, could we do this on just Thursdays? And I know I've heard from people, Public Works, other people, no, it's too much work. It's too much trouble. It's too much this. And if you don't put the big blocks up, it's too damn, it's too dangerous. That I agree with. You can't just put up a, a, you know, like a, a fence line because a car could drive through. So, but could we look at this and say, we did something four or five years ago and it's evolved into something, but now that something has some difficulties. Can we find a compromise? Can we adjust the way we do it to still allow the fun stuff to happen? And every, and we make adjustments so everybody could potentially win. So that the businesses that are there don't lose 30% of their parking spaces during the day, every day, when restaurants only need them really later at night. Could we do that? I don't know. So this is the, the way I'm thinking about it. I would like to find this compromise. It, it, I talk to people that own the buildings. I talk to tenants. I've talked to the businesses. They've contacted me. I've talked to other businesses. People say, well, and a lot of people in favor of this say, people that are walking around up there, they're going to all the restaurants up there. I agree. That's amazing. So let me ask you this and try to be open, honest with me. Would they not do that? If the, really? Can I finish? Would they not do that if there was music, but the tables weren't in the parking lot?
Ladies and gentlemen, can we allow Mr. Testa to finish his comments, please? Everyone's going to get an opportunity to talk, but I don't know why, I'm not clear how this is getting so out of hand. This is an issue about spaces in a parking lot. This is, no one dies.
No, it's really not. I, I respect it. I appreciate it. I'm just saying. And I normally wouldn't throw everything out. I want you to think about the big picture that I'm trying to think about. Would people not still come up there if we allowed some spaces for that music and the fun and all that other stuff, but not blocking off the whole parking lot for tables for a restaurant? People, because the people that are going to knuckleheads, going to library, going to other places, they're not going to the restaurants that have the tables in the parking lot. They would still come uptown if there was music and fun. Could we still block off a small part of the parking lot for that activity? And not block off eight spaces for the whole summer with tables that eliminate the space for the whole year? Yes, I know that is not in the best interest of one or two restaurants. But every other restaurant in town looks at me and says, why should that one or two restaurants get that benefit that I don't get? And I could still vote for them. I voted for it every year. I've liked, I've loved it. But I'm trying to look for a compromise that could allow us to continue to go forward with something. And I don't know what that might be, but I've thrown out everything other than asking Public Works and the police, could this be done temporarily on a Thursday to Friday weekly? Would it require extra people coming up there, moving things? It would require extra work. Is that too much to ask? I'm, I'm saying, is that too much to ask? I don't know. I haven't asked. I will, I will, I, I want to hear what you have to say to what I'm saying. And you'll have the opportunity to do that. I'm laying it all out here. And I'm trying to represent everybody. All of the businesses. I love what happens up there. I love the restaurants involved. So I'm looking at it and saying, we, first of all, we're not talking about sidewalk dining. We're talking about parking lot dining. This has been presented in a lot of ways as us voting on sidewalk dining. And people are thinking we're going to shut down sidewalk dining in Wallingford. No, we're not. We're not. We have sidewalk dining. We always will. This is parking lot dining. So at least acknowledge what it is we're talking about. We have to make this decision. And I'm sorry if I'm a little brusque, but acknowledge what I'm saying. This is hard. We respect the businesses. We respect the people's feelings on this. It's not an easy decision. So I've, I've thrown out all these ideas that I'm trying to come to grips with. And I may well sit back and say, you know what? Let's do it another year. And I'm okay. I had, I said a whole bunch of stuff and maybe it didn't matter. But there, there could be a better answer to this. That is, acknowledges the benefits to the other businesses that have concerns, real concerns. And it acknowledges the very real issue of providing public space for a private business at the expense of other businesses. Don't underestimate the importance of that decision. That bothers a lot of people and it's our responsibility to think about that. It's not emotional. Yeah, I've gone far enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other item that might be useful in regards to if we do go down the road of compensation. So we mentioned the $150 a month per parking space. I believe also Public Works was asked to estimate how much the placement of the blocks is. And their estimate came back that it was about $800 for the placement and $800 for the removal. So if anyone wanted to just have that number, if we go down that route, we have that also. So as far as the, the parking, I'm not quite as concerned about the fairness aspect. I mean, I think we have ample public parking. It's funny, you go, you know, you go to dinner in New Haven, you, you park three blocks away and you think that's a great spot. And in Wallingford, we always tend to want to park right in front of the door. So I'm not as concerned about the parking. We also, you know, much to my dismay, paid to pave the lot behind this, for these exact same tenants. You know, privately owned lot for public parking. exact same tenants, um, you know, privately owned lot for public parking, so I, I think the parking for me isn't as big of an issue, um, I think for me, it's, it's more the fairness aspect, um. You know, we do a lot on Main Street, and we have more ability to do, even if it wasn't in the parking lot, we have the ability to close Main Street more easily, um, but then you, you know, we have a lot of new restaurants on Center Street, and that's a state road, and it's not, it's easy for us to do anything for them. Um, we talked to ordinance committee about, um, standards, you know, for, for the sidewalk dining in particular, and, you know, then that kind of got derailed because, you know, who liked a white vinyl fence and who wanted a black, you know, wrought iron fence, and then that, you know, then we end up with Christmas wreaths with half LED and half incandescent, and we had that whole talk, so, so we, we go off on that, so that all, that all got kind of pushed away because, you know, for us to say, this is what we want, we can't go down that road. So it's just a, it's a, it's a tough decision, because we have some businesses saying, you're giving an unfair advantage to, to two or three businesses that we're not giving to them. You know, but then again, I, I look at the other side of it, and it's, it's town land, which means it's the people's land in essence, and, um, you know, if the people of the town are saying that they really enjoy this, and they really like this, and they want us to do that, then I think that says something also. Um, you know, the council kind of created this, I'll call it an issue, it is an issue at this point, um, you know, we created this during the pandemic, um, meaning well, and it, and it worked out really well, and I think it's, I think now it's kind of on us to fix it. I'm not sure that doing something this year is, is a great idea, I think, I think maybe we keep it for this year, um, and we decide how we want to go forward in, in upcoming years, um, I mean, it's already almost June, and I think it was kind of expected that it was going to happen this year. So I'm, I'm willing to listen to everybody, my mind's not made up yet, but I think, if anything, um, I, I just think it's maybe too late this year to, to pull the plug on this, um, and we maybe need another year to decide how to address it, um, finally, but, um, I'm just, I'm willing to listen to everybody, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Currently, there is no motion on the table. Mr. Lefen?
Sorry, new mics. For when people are coming to the, to the mic, I, I imagine the answer to this question for the people in the room is going to be, it's not a problem, but what, um, what was brought up to me, which is a good idea, um, makes sense to me, is actually, when the parking lot's being used in addition to the sidewalk space outside the restaurant, in order to pass through Simpson Court, you're basically walking through a dining room. And so some residents raised the concern, um, that if, they weren't in favor of the parking space, right, um, but they said, if you are going to do it, can you pull back on the sidewalk so that people could pass through without moving around tables and, and things like that? So I don't, that's a, that's an ops thing that needs to be figured out, um, and, and decided if, if we're going to do this. I, I, I do think there is a fairness issue, though, because we are discussing supplying for free or for funding, uh, square footage for profit. And I think that, that is the fairness, uh, twist for me. And, and I don't think this is, this is pulling the plug, this, I, I never understood it last year to be, uh, we're going to do this for everything, um, if everybody else up here disagrees, I was the only one that opposed this last year. And I'm actually more in favor of it than everybody else that spoke so far, so, I mean, cut me some slack. I'm trying to figure out the solution, I'm the one offering the answer here. So these are the other things that I think need to be addressed if we're going to do this.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, I just, um, you know, there's been a lot of ideas that have been presented, and I know Counselor Testa brought up this situation about possibly doing Thursday to Friday, and, you know, therefore you have a flex the, the rest of the time, and maybe extend that to Saturday. But, you know, I guess when you look at the numbers, um, you know, not every month has four weeks, but assuming that every month is four weeks, just with the calculation, if you did 850 times 150 for each parking spot, eight, well, no, it's 150 per parking spot, is eight spots is what's been represented, that's $1,200. And then if you have, if Public Works to install and to remove, um, each time is to install and remove, it's $800?
Correct, that was my.
Or is it to install, it's $800, and to remove, it's $800?
Correct, $1,600 total.
Okay, so, doing that math at four weeks per month, which obviously some months have more, you know, that's $7,600 a month would be, and, you know, it's, at some point, if there's a motion up here, I think we got to know what kind of money we're dealing with, and, you know, I think I would only consider this if that $7,600 was given to those businesses that could not take advantage of this, instead of, instead of it going to the general fund, where it could be spent on anything. So, um, you know, that's sort of the dynamic here, if somebody's going to pay for the utilization of town property at the negative of others, those that are being negatively impacted, should it have some benefit in that payment, instead of it just coming to the government that could go for anything? So, those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Testa, I'm sorry, Counselor Carmody is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and my apologies, I just had mouth surgery, so bear with me. The center of our town is our, our community's gathering place, it is a unique place unlike no other area in our, in our, in our community. And, and when I think of a thriving town center, this is exactly what I think about, um, the people, the families, young and old, uh, congregating, uh, right in the heart of our community. And to me, this is a huge benefit, uh, to our town, it builds community, it brings people together, and, and I understand what everyone is saying up here, um, but I really think we should find a way to make this work. This is so important to our community as a whole. I want to hear what everyone has to say, um, but, and so that's all, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Counselor Testa.
Well, after all I said, I would not be in favor of telling these folks, you have to give us $8,000 for the summer, you might as well put them on a business. I mean, I, I mean, yeah, you, I mean, hopefully you know where I was coming from, I love you folks, I love these places, I'm just trying to find a compromise, as Counselor Carmody said, but I mean, I mean, I teach culinary arts, I teach how to run a restaurant in, in a school, that's what I, and, and I worked, and I understand the cost of operating a restaurant. You're just adding another lease to a restaurant, which they couldn't afford to pay, and that would basically rule this whole thing out. Now, that's not to say you might work out a nominal fee, but to try to package it up based on appraised value and so on and so forth, um, I would be against that. I would, I would vote for this and not charge them anything before I would not vote for it. Having said that, when I, when I hear that it might cost roughly 16, again, this is a hourly estimate, I'm sure, maybe $1,600 to remove and, and put back the blocks if you did it on a weekly basis. I have no problem with having Public Works pay for that. If we decided, again, if we decided that this was worthwhile for the community, I'm okay with that expenditure. That's not what this was about, it, it, that's not what it's about. I would love to see us work something out where this can happen for two to three nights a week, but not for the whole week. That's what I'm trying to get at, I would like to see that happen. If that can't happen, then, you know, at this stage of the game, I think what, you know, what Chris, uh, Counselor Tatta said was, you know, at this point, um, we go forward and work a little harder on it to iron out the problems for next year. I'm not against that, I just wanted to share all the issues that I had with this, and that I, I, I think we need to acknowledge. Again, as I said, it doesn't mean I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lefen?
It the, it's $800 to put out the blocks and take them back in each time. Yeah, so if you're doing that every week, that's $1,600 a week, that's ridiculous. That's a, I, I know, I think, I'm against the town absorbing $25,000 or whatever it is for the summer. But that's not, well, then we'd have to talk to Public Works, that's not the information that we were given. So I, to clarify, I don't know where this, I didn't, the 7,600, it's, if they had eight spaces at $150, um, it's $4,800 for the summer, and then $1,600 to set up the blocks and take them down, $6,400 for the summer, whole summer. I don't know, I'm okay with that part, but if you guys want to figure out how to put them down, pick them up, put them down, pick them up, I just don't think that's feasible with those, with those blocks. I get what you're saying, and I, I like it all, I just don't operationally see how that's, that can be done.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Public Works is down several positions for a variety of reasons, and, uh, to, to have them show up on a Friday morning and then show up again on a Monday morning adds a burden to their workload that, you know, is kind, I think, is a significant impact on what they're doing. So. And the other, um, the other concern I have is that, um, you know, it, it should be determined which of the tenants, if, if, if there's going to be a rental payment, if that's what the council ultimately decides, you know, which of the tenants are going to benefit from it, um, you know, I mean, I think the majority of the people here are, are here to talk about Gaitanos, if Gaitanos is the only one who's interested in doing it, do they need eight spaces? So we might, might want to determine that. But if, if, you know, if it starts in, in front of the first restaurant and goes through the end of the parking lot, you know, there are two other businesses there. So that's something the council should consider and may want to determine before it makes a final decision.
All right, thank you, Mayor, uh, off to Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I just, um, I wanted to also acknowledge that I, I appreciated the sort of, uh, the, the scene that was kind of taking place in, in, in uptown. I think it's nice that we have a place like that where folks can go, um, it looked like a lot of fun. I, I would, I, I too would like to maybe pursue, uh, some thoughts and ideas in the future for something a little bit more, uh, maybe less, uh, in the way. I, I also am interested in sort of the concept of, you know, sort of renting the spaces as a compromise, you know, so that some money could go into the maintenance, the extra maintenance and so forth. But yeah, I'm, I'm mostly interested in what the, what the public has to say, but I, you know, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that I, I, I appreciated the, uh, the, the scene that was going on up there, um, and, uh, you know, and it looks like a lot of fun, and, uh, you know, it's, it's a benefit to the town, so I, if, if we're not able to agree on this, I would like to try to work towards agreeing on something similar in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the question for Mr. Mayor, I, it was a rumor, I was talking to somebody involved with WCI, that we were going to be having more frequent block parties, um, would that take place, uh, i- is the administration thinking of that, or was that a WCI, uh, topic?
I've had conversations with WCI about starting, uh, this summer with a monthly night where we close, um, North Main Street from Center Street up to Church. So we're developing that, um, you know, and I, I, I suspect that this particular restaurant is looking at that as a totally different experience than having those spaces blocked off for the entire summer.
Okay, thank you, um, again, you know, we're kind of, we're almost already into June, so it's hard to, it's hard to plan all this now, but, um, I think if those, those were to happen, that, that would be nice to benefit more of the uptown businesses, um, you know, we're, and still, I, I still feel bad for the, you know, the, the restaurant, there's those new restaurants on Center Street that we really can't do much with, um, but, um, well, well, we do care because they're businesses in town, so, um, you know, we care about everybody, and we're just trying to, to find something that works for everybody. But, okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else in the council? So there's still no motion on the floor. Uh, but we can hear from members of the public, anyone from the public like to speak, sir? Just your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Burkhart, 68 Simpson Avenue. I think that as a society, we need to give back to closer families. On Thursday night, I get to watch my, uh, 72-year-old sister dance with her 16-year-old granddaughter. And that's important. In this room right now, there's five people that are my friends, that are really important to me, that wouldn't have happened because of that, uh, Tarn, and Glenn, and Rick, and George, we're all very different, uh, where we come from. But there's some other things I wanted to look at. There's 150 seats extra because of that area being blocked off. Now, if there wasn't 150 seats extra, some of the people that are employed by Gaitanos and Half Moon wouldn't have jobs. Now, I happen to know two of them are college students that really need that money. Great girls, their sisters, and then one, one of the brothers works there too, they're great people, and they won't have jobs probably if you don't have those extra seats. Now, we just went through, we went through two years of COVID, where we didn't go out, we didn't do anything, we didn't communicate, the only thing we do is this, texts. We need to start talking to each other, we need to start caring about each other, we need older people that set a good example, show the younger people how things are supposed to be. We're supposed to love each other. The only way we're going to solve the problems in our country, starting here in Wallingford as one of the places, is to love one another and talk to one another. And that's very important. And that little happening every Thursday night, and the concerts out here, and then on the weekends, sometimes Gaitanos or Half Moon have performers come in and perform, brings us all together. And yeah, it's, there's, there would still be people eating outside, but not the numbers, and we wouldn't be able to bring as many people together. So if we really want to take care of one another and care about each other, and there's one last thing I want to mention, I was sitting there one night with my friends at a table, we have a table every week, and there were four people from Cho walking by, uh, two parents, two sets of parents, and one father turned to the other father and goes, boy, this really is impressive, this Wallingford really knows how to do things, they really do nice things for their people. And we have one of the best DJs in the state that comes and takes care of us every week, and he doesn't just play the kind of music he likes, because that would be all from the 50s. But he plays country, he plays movie songs, he does rap, he does everything, he even let me rap once. So, let's look at the big picture, what's really important here? Bring in people together, talking, being a family. You can applaud now.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart, Mr. Ross?
Ray Ross, 656 Center Street. Just a couple of, uh, opinions that I, listening to the conversation tonight, number one, I, I, you're going on a slippery slope if you think you're going to charge the, the business for, for the parking space in front of their business, because then you're going to have to offer it to everybody down Center Street. And I'm sure you, nobody wants to do that. Number two, as you know, I'm the town photographer, and I'm up there, and I, I see smiling faces, families with little kids and older kids, and just adult couples enjoying themselves in a safe environment, and then on Thursdays, they get the music. And I, I just don't see that there's a, it's, if it's name broke, don't try to fix it, it's been going for a couple of years now, just fine, all of a sudden, there's a problem. There's no problem here, uh, it, it's, it's just the ambiance, Southington closes one whole block for the summer, West Hartford just closed one block downtown West Hartford for three weeks to put Cirque du Soleil in there. I don't see the problem, it's, it's between six and eight parking spaces. When I go, I always find. When I go, I always find the parking space across the street from the post office, always. That's a short walk to Simpson Court. And I, I think it's well worth keeping doing, it's, it, it helps the restaurants and it helps the people of town be proud of their town, and I'm proud of our town. And I hope you gentlemen, real, and ladies, realize that. And if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Let's just keep it as it's been. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Ross, the good DJ. May I approach the bench first to give you the insurance?
Sure.
Insurance for that little path of grass. Cost me twenty-four hundred dollars more this year for the town of Wallingford to have insurance there and in all the schoolyards because of the things that we do like.
Mr. Ross, if you could just speak into the microphone.
I'm talking to the mic. Okay. Thank you so much for taking my call today, Joe. I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Christine, thank you three weeks ago for the call, and thank you to all the council people. I'm approaching this a little different tonight. My goal was to help the small businesses, the businesses in that area, because it was the best prime spot to have people come out. Uptown Rhythm and Barricades, here's what happens. All these restaurants' insurances have gone up, sky-high limits this year. Payrolls have increased, maintenance has increased, food and beverage pricing, repairs, utilities, rents. These businesses hire local college students, local Sheehan High School students, and Lyman Hall High School students throughout Uptown Rhythm, because they need the help on the tables, inside, whether it's washing dishes, bringing out the food. Think about the small businesses that are up there. Myself, I have nine individuals that helped me last year. I made zero money on Uptown Wallingford, zero. I paid all my staff. Get me out of here. I can't stand up. I got a wedding to do Friday and Saturday. Characters, you want to get into the characters we've done? Let's go to the character page. The characters came from Disney. That's correct, from Disney. I'll give you the number right here.
If you check that page, I just want to get that one spot here. Number nine on your photos up there.
This was our theme. It was Star Wars, Disney permission. They were from Disney. Five oh one S.T. Legion, thirty-seven pages I filled out. What did I have to do? Check the photos. You'll see a picture of Spider-Man putting the money in the wishing well uptown for the donations. That's where some of my money is going. How about all the characters that were there over the years? Barbie, Taylor Swift. I don't even know half the names of these other people. Also, how about the people that came up and sang a song? How about Sarah Donahue, who everybody in town calls Sarah to get a princess? Everybody calls Sarah to bring her violin and play. Sarah, do it for free. Sarah, do it for free. I pay Sarah. She's part of our Disney troupe, along with my granddaughter, who fills out the thirty-seven pages, who works in Disney. These themes are created by my granddaughter, Sarah, and myself. Clean music, fun music for families. We have someone in here, right here, I want to read this little spot. He had come up in the last four years. His name is Bo Ballow. Rock Hill School, science project last year for the town of Wallingford. He won that contest. He then went to Oakdale, won that contest. Now he'll be attending the National Invention Convention Finals at the Henry Ford Museum in June for his snow density alert. He's been on TV. Do you know how many visits he made uptown to pick up the mic and talk on a good sound system? Quite a few. He also did it at the Holy Trinity Bazaar. Think about how he's cutting his wedge to get into the business. Let's see if I have any more to say. The Encanto float, all permission to have that. We did the big Encanto theme. Not only did we do that at Uptown for all the kids and all the families, we did it in the parade. And I must say, it was probably the best float we've seen. The town is still cleaning up the confetti and all the other things that we did. Once again, all with permission from Disney, doing it correctly. I had enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mira?
Good evening. Tough act to follow. Joe Mira, twenty-one Pequot Road. I guess we could call this an early night if you take word of what I'm about to say. The clear statement someone said up there this evening is maybe we should go ahead and do it again this year and work on it until next year. And I really believe that's the way this council should go, because this is not just about the one section in town that we're talking about. This is about the hospitality industry that the town has developed over twenty-five years. We have distilleries, we have breweries, we have hotels, we have destination restaurants, we have activities, uh, wineries. We have it all. This was just a cherry on the cake. We had an, an opportunity, an unfortunate opportunity that came out of a disaster, and it proved positive. And it brings the community together. One thing that gets lost in sight is that we could talk about small businesses like they're abstract. This is a capitalist society. These are people that are involved in businesses in a capitalist society. And when you're involved in the business in a capitalist society, you take on challenges, you don't look to the government to take care of them for you. And in this particular case, all you need to do is have conversations with each other. A simple thing like maybe table tents describing businesses at the restaurants, about the local businesses. The reason that this thing is so successful is what's been pointed out. It's bringing people from all over. As he said, Cho sees it, of course. But more important, what we got to realize is that we are building more and more apartments in this town. Okay? Those people are going to need someplace to go in the evenings. All right? And they're coming here from Yalesville, from Tracy, from East Side, West Side. You're putting people together in an atmosphere that's really conducive for this com, uh, community. And to close it down or for a town to charge a hundred and change for a parking space, to me, that's embarrassing. When you look at our town budget, if we need to go to that level on a hospitality situation that's benefiting the town more than I think is benefiting the business. If they're making money, God bless them. They're also taking risk. They're also employing people. They're also, those people that they're employing are paying rent. Those people, the landlords are paying taxes. The cars, I mean, there's a whole dynamics that's involved here. So just to look at it as one restaurant or two restaurants taking up eight spaces, my personal point of view is, I don't know why we still have those spaces. Why we, why don't we just close them off completely? Fill it in for three kiosks and let the town sell the kiosks. We have the parking lot in the back. There's no reason for them. I mean, we're talking about fairness. There is no such thing as fairness. Okay? They have private parking there, the, the restaurants on Center Street have private parking. It's just not the way that thing is made. So you have an opportunity, as I said, and I'm going to close because I'm talking in circles. You have an opportunity to let it go this year and really work on the dynamics. I mean, there's a lot here. There's a lot of moving pieces. It's not just the benefit, and that's the sad part. It seems to me like we're all talking about the one restaurant and the eight spaces. It's bigger than that, and there's more opportunity to that. The businesses that, that may be complaining now, if they took a step back and spoke to each other, they can find ways of making more money out of this. More food traffic, we've talked about that on other situations. You build up free traffic, people can't pay for that advertisement. I thank you for your time.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Savoni, and the people of Wallingford. My name is Lynn Ford, Four Putter Drive, Wallingford, and I am the chaplain at Masonicare. I want to talk to you about what goes on at Simpson Court when part of the parking is taken to make room for more outdoor seating, music, dancing, and eating. The result is greater socialization. You may think it's not a big deal, but as all of the speakers here tonight have pointed out, I have seen firsthand the devastating effects of isolation on the residents at Masonicare. They experienced health issues such as cognitive decline, depression, anxiety, and stress-related issues. Isolation is one of the biggest issues of our time. Although older adults comprise about thirteen percent of the total population, they account for more than eighteen percent of all suicides. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among children aged ten to fourteen, fifteen to twenty-four, and twenty-five to thirty-four because of depression arising out of isolation. I, should I even mention the word devices? So socialization is critical to our well-being. We are herd animals. We need to be together. We yearn for connection. We hunger for the familiar faces of friends. Opening Simpson Court, and I am not exaggerating, is nothing less than a healing force for the people who live and work in Wallingford and surrounding areas. It is what is best for everyone. Socialization is a big deal. Thank you for your time.
Sir?
Hi, my name is Bob Scelio, nineteen fifty-five Tuttle Avenue. I've been uptown ten of nine, quarter to nine, and I see people parking in Simpson Court. Their coffee in their hand, their lunch in their hand, they're going to these businesses, they work there, they're employees. And I don't see the cars moving all day. They, they just sit there. So maybe having moved those cars, you might wind up seeing more parking places uptown. That's it.
Thank you. Sir?
Scott Ingris, two eighty-eight North Colony Street. Uh, so I am, I work part-time for DJ John Ross. Uh, I often am uptown on Thursday nights doing, uh, you know, the Uptown Rhythm DJing. I would say I have three, four, five people on any given Thursday come up to me and say, "Oh my God, this is amazing." These are people from out of town, out of state, who don't live in Wallingford, just happen to be passing through in the area. And everyone is so impressed. Everyone who comes up to me, I never have anyone come and say, "Uh, this is, I, I hate that you guys are doing this. This is annoying." Never happens. On the contrary, I have, again, three, four, or five people come up and say, "Oh my God, I wish my community did this. This is amazing. This happens every Thursday? That's crazy." Like, people love it. Um, I also run the Sound Spectrum Entertainment Instagram page. Um, and I have in my DMs on Instagram, multiple messages from people saying, "Hey, when's Uptown Rhythm starting? When are you guys going to start?" They look forward to it. People are looking forward to it, especially this year, right? There's already people asking. Um, so I think it would be a huge mistake to pull the plug, um, at this point. Um, maybe there's things that can be improved for next year, uh, but certainly for this year, people are already looking forward to it, already asking. Um, we do, if you've never been, you should come. It's, uh, it's a great time every Thursday night from five to nine P.M. Uh, we do a different theme of music every week. So as someone said, you know, sometimes it's country, sometimes it's rock and roll, whatever it is. And people are so excited, they'll come and say, "Hey, what's the theme next week? I'm already looking forward to it. I'm going to get my cowboy hat ready. It's Country Night next week." Um, so people absolutely look forward to this. Um, they come out specifically, like, when we get, sometimes it rains and we, we get rained out, people are super disappointed. Um, and it doesn't just benefit, obviously, as everyone's pretty much said, does not just benefit Gaetanos and Half Moon and Mr. D's and the library, um, which are the main businesses that we're playing in front of, but it benefits everyone, right? Because all the businesses in the area are, uh, are profiting, because everyone, like, they might eat down the street at a different restaurant, but then they're coming uptown to listen to the music afterwards. Um, and they're hanging out, walking around, talking, sitting, grabbing an ice cream. Um, and it's just a great community event that, uh, everyone's pretty much become accustomed to and looks forward to. Um, so definitely think you should vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Victoria Neal from twenty-seven Carr Street. Uh, I kind of was hoping I was last, because it sounds like I'm going to be doing a recap here of a lot of things that have come up tonight. It did come up earlier this evening, something about a petition. I will say that from what I understand, there has been a petition circulated, has over, give or take five hundred signatures. So that may be of something to note. Um, I am surprised at the local businesses in town, the reactions that you may have heard from. This town, to me, has always been very supportive of each other. I recall when Tap and Vine was struggling. Oh, here's the petition. Which I will gladly pop up there and give to you in a moment. But anyway, seriously, I mean, we've always been supporting each other, particularly the, the restaurant industry. Tap and Vine was struggling at one point. We had restaurants sending their servers and their, and their cooks down there to help them out. Stellus was struggling at one point. We had restaurants posting on the forum to go down there and patronize their, their restaurant. So I, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that we do have some folks that, um, do not want to, uh, support Tap, uh, to support the, um, Simpson Court, uh, parking lot dining. I have heard some of these solutions earlier, and I think that's the way to go here this evening, is not to come here and just say what we want, but rather to come forward with solutions. And I do have a few that I want to propose. Uh, I am also aware, and the recent speaker mentioned this, that there are employees that work in, uh, the businesses on Simpson Court that park in Simpson Court, and I too have witnessed this, and they park there from the duration, for the duration of their shifts. So at least for the summer, I would suggest, in the interest of everybody, that perhaps they park now in the back parking lot, which is now beautifully redone, so, uh, kudos to having that done. Uh, I understand that perhaps Body and Soul has an issue with some of their clientele, which is understandable in that some of them may be a little bit older. And these are just thoughts that I am throwing out there, but perhaps we can have a temporary handicap sign in front of their place of business that, that can be posted during the summer months, and then maybe removed at the end of the summer months. I understand that it's not going to give the side space that's available, but perhaps, you know, not everybody needs that additional side space to pull in and push, pull out, put back in equipment. So maybe we can just do something like that. And in the interest of marketing and in, in the interest of supporting each other's businesses in this town, as we are known for doing, somebody mentioned this earlier too, I actually, in my notes, why not market each other? Why not have a flyer on the tables that are in Simpson Court? I actually spoke to Gaetanos about this. I said, "Make a Body and Saltini." What the heck? Everybody who buys a Body and Saltini, Gaetanos will give you five dollars for a discount on their services. I mean, this is, we need to be a community, folks. That is what Wallingford has always been about. People do talk. People walk. They walk before dinner. They walk after dinner. They walk up and down. They talk among themselves while they're dining on Simpson Court. I know, I'm there a lot. I hear the conversation and I jump in as well. And I always mention other dining areas that are in the business. For those who say that things are not fair, all due respect, business is not fair. Gaetanos is a prime example. They had a landlord take over their building. That landlord decided they needed the space for their own business. They reduced the dining area at Gaetanos by fifty percent. Is that fair? No. Is it business? Yes. Things happen. So I appreciate the, the unfairness argument, but honestly, it is what it is. Um, I agree with whoever mentioned earlier that some of the things come out of the most unfortunate circumstances. circumstances. Indeed, COVID is what brought this all about, but that doesn't mean it has to go away. I don't know if you're familiar with the Post-it note, but if you are, you may know that the researchers at 3M were actually looking for a super glue, and they were unsuccessful, and the darn glue wasn't sticking, and they realized they had a phenomenal product in the Post-it note because you could reattach it. I don't know about you, but I have a lot of those at my house. So they made millions off of that. They made something out of an unfortunate situation. They did not just turn their backs on that. Those who argue about their tax dollars, and honestly, I have not heard that here tonight so much, and I appreciate that. I pay taxes. There's a lot of things in this town that I pay taxes for that I do not utilize. That's what a town is about. You pay your taxes, you use what you need, and the rest goes to other sources. Ladies and gentlemen of the council and in this audience, the world right now is really heavy, you know? All I am asking for and suggesting and throwing out some ideas for is, let's lighten it up. Let's make Wallingford, or let's keep Wallingford, a place to come and enjoy. Go out, have meals, all seven days of the week outdoors, because this is not a Thursday night-only situation. Socialize, as our woman from Masonicare, yes, you are a young woman, pardon me, mentioned. It's so important, and I really do hope that you will approve this this evening. And quite honestly, I hope we do not have to meet here again next year, that we can make this a permanent situation that in some way, shape, or form can benefit everybody here in Wallingford. Thank you so much.
My name is Barbara Cappi, 6 Demi Road, and I want to ask, how many spaces are actually in that court? How many parking spaces? We keep talking about eight. What is the total number?
I have no idea.
33. So you're talking approximately, what, 25% of the parking spaces are affected by Gaetano's seating arrangement? With what's left there from Gaetano's on, Half Moon and the Library, the slots that are left, which if I'm adding right, would be 25. You mean to tell me that 25 spaces cannot accommodate the few businesses that are above Gaetano's? You go into the bank, you go in and out. The real estate agency, do you see people flocking into that store? And if the spa is complaining about it, well, then unfortunately, that's capitalism. If you come up against a challenge, you find a way around it. Henry Ford ran out of ideas after the Model T. Bingo, the Model A. Look at the cars now. We've got electric cars. Nobody sits on their fanny when they're in business. You promote, you advertise, you in some way induce people to come into your business. You do not depend on a government agency to subsidize you. Now, it's a wonderful event up there. We all love it, and with the petition there, 500 votes, I ask you, how many of you have a 500-vote leeway from your last election? How many of you are 500 votes for maybe not sitting in those seats?
Sir?
My name is George Hart, 521 North Elm Street, right here in Wallingford. I would like to say that ever since COVID, the outdoor seating, as well as the Uptown Rhythm here with John Roz, has been a success. I look, every year since the pandemic, I have looked forward to not just the dining outside on Thursday evenings as well as every nights, but also, excuse me, to the music as well as have many others in this room, my friends Bob Burkhart, Tarn and Lynn, and Rick right over here. We have enjoyed it every single year, and we hope that the vote will be to keep it going because I can speak forever. There are other people in this room here who would like this to continue on. It's not, and one of the things since the pandemic is that the Thursday night music, as well as the outdoor seating, has brought us together, especially after for weeks and almost months of the self-isolation, which I can say was extremely hard for myself. I think I can say that for the other people in this room, if I'm not mistaken. So my hope is that despite the problems and concerns, that we can keep this going. And it's not just good for the people here in Wallingford, but it's also good for the people out of town. And I can't begin to tell you how many have said to me, you know, "George, I look to this, forward to this every week," and I say to them, "I look forward to this as well." And it also, it's good to also see people and friends that you haven't seen in a while or in a long time, or even just to catch up over a meal or a drink. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Stephen Belly, formerly of 93 Fair Street. My wife, Linda, is the one that owns Body & Soul. In the beginning, I supported her. I was a nurse at Gaylord and was afforded the schedule, so I actually was her secretary, much to this may have any woman that called and heard this voice say, "Body & Soul, Despa." I'm gonna say basically the same thing I said to you guys last year. The pandemic hit hard. It hit hard and crucified and crushed many people, many businesses. I know firsthand, I'm a nurse. I was in isolation at work, and then I got put in isolation when I came home from work. So it was tough. My wife's family has at least 10 members that own banquet facilities, restaurants, and stores. They were also affected, and it was scary because you didn't know if you were gonna survive. Gaetano's, being a small-town restaurant, I sympathize wholeheartedly. And let's be very clear, Body & Soul does not want to put anybody out of business. We do not want to take away anybody's business, okay? That's not what we're about. What we are about is finding a fair and equitable agreement to make it, you know, cohesive, okay? And to the young woman who spoke before me and said that it's not the government's job to subsidize a business, well, I'm sorry, but isn't that kind of what's happening? By blocking off that parking lot, you basically gain square footage, okay? Square footage in a restaurant is expensive, and I'm sure you know it firsthand, very expensive. Now, I'm not saying you gotta pay $150 per spot, per whatever. I don't think that's the solution either, but I do think there needs to be a serious discussion, and if that means the businesses involved, Gaetano's, Half Moon, Mr. D's, Body & Soul, whoever, that we all get together somehow and sit down and say, "Okay, look, I'll be the first to tell you, not only am I a nurse, I'm the lead singer of a pretty damn good rock band, and I've been singing for about 40 years." Listen, I would love to get my band to do Twilight tunes, but my point is, the music that I do hear being played, I love it because even though I'm 59, my mom and dad grew up with the '50s and '60s. So it does, you know, when I hear it playing, it does spark a memory, and it is really cool. We moved to Wallingford in '02 from New Haven because it was that Norman Rockwell look. That's what I, I used to say to everybody that didn't know Wallingford, "It's hometown USA." That's what I described it as, because that's what it felt like to me, coming from New Haven. I've lived all over the world. I was with the United States Air Force. I was stationed in Italy. That sidewalk seating, the alfresco dining, incredible, loved it because it reminded me of being back there again. Back to the pandemic, it was a stopgap. What is a stopgap? It's a proviso put in place to avert a big problem, okay? There's no doubt that that could have put any one of those businesses, my wife's, Gaetano's, any of them, out of business, but they survived because they're good businesspeople and they have the support of the community. But there it is. It's a stopgap. It was supposed to be temporary. If you've decided that you want to do this forever, and I know you said, "Let's table it to next year," but unfortunately, everybody said that last year. So when is the year that we decide and figure out what's gonna be the fair and equitable and most beneficial to everybody, okay? Because like I said, it's not very, I'm gonna be very clear so that nobody misunderstands me, Body & Soul is not in the business of putting anyone else out of business, okay? And we're not here complaining just to complain. It's a real thing. My wife has, I don't know, about 30 letters that were sent to her from clients saying, you know, "My hips are bad." And not all our clients are elderly, but some of them come for therapeutic massage because they don't want to go under the knife and get their back operated on, and it helps. Their hips, they don't want to get them replaced, so they get massage, and it helps. But when they park in the back, they say, "It's a real problem. It's tough for me to walk up that, it's not even that big of an incline, really, in the alleyway," but to them, it is. So I don't know. I mean, I like the idea of the Body & Soul martini. That's actually pretty cool, and that could actually work, so. But yeah, if that's what it takes, then let's all figure out a way to sit down collectively together as business owners and say, "What can we do?" Because it's not like we despise anybody. We don't. We don't. We've bought food from Gaetano's, they've come over to us before. Everybody's supported everybody, but I think it's become this big, you know, elephant in the room because, "Well, I want the parking spaces. You don't deserve extra square footage." And so, yeah, you know, I told my wife, I said, "Look, I think we're kind of, you know, rolling that boulder uphill, and I don't think we're gonna get, you know, the outcome that we hoped for." Like, don't close off the parking lot, but there may be something, and I'm sure with all you guys and you ladies and all of us businesspeople, sitting down collectively, we can figure something out. So that's all I have to say. But it needs to be put to bed, and I don't think it needs to be put to bed next year. I think it really needs to be thought about, and something needs to be done sooner rather than later. Thanks.
Bob Allo, 4 Farm Court. I came down today to give a perspective from a young family standpoint. I have two kids, 11 and 9, at Rock Hill, but we really enjoyed going to Uptown, but I really liked about it is it's a safe community space. So by putting up those barriers, I don't worry about my kids running around having fun because it's a safe space for them to just enjoy the night. I think if you eliminated that and just have cars there, I don't think it's as, I don't feel like it's as safe of a space, you know, for them to go and enjoy the night with everyone there. And it really is a beautiful community, night, all ages, everyone enjoying themselves, talking to each other, you know, really that you don't get on a daily basis, and I think that's what kind of makes Wallingford special. I grew up here. I have, I could, you know, when I was looking at different towns, I looked at Sullington, Cheshire, Wallingford, North Haven, but at the end of the day, there's something just special about Wallingford, and I feel like, coming out of the pandemic, this was a wonderful idea to bring the whole community back together, which it did, you know, in a safe, you know, center of town, special area that everyone could safely enjoy it. You know, I kept hearing about costs, you know, associated with it. The thing that comes to my mind is added value. So I can only think of another place that actually does this frequently, and it's not in Connecticut. It's, my brother's down in Sarasota, there's Lakewood Ranch. So it's a small community within Sarasota, but it's million-dollar homes, and they have this type of event every whatever night. People come and they celebrate, and they're downtown, and there's music and DJs and everything like that. So when I think about that, you know, bringing something like that to Wallingford, it's an added value. With the home values up, young families coming to town, say you're driving down on a Thursday night, hey, what's going on in the center of town here? There's young kids having fun? Are they celebrating something big? No, that's just a Thursday night in Wallingford. You know, the home values have gone up. How do you justify keeping, you know, bringing in young families by providing entertainment that they can't get anywhere else? And I feel like that's what Wallingford provided here. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack McGuire, 6 North Main Street and 26 North Main Street. So I'm right in Simpson Court. You heard from one of my tenants, Body & Soul, and again, I'm here to speak for some of my other tenants who asked me to talk about this. It's a tough decision for the council to make this decision tonight because at first, when I looked at this issue, I couldn't make up my own mind. I stopped at Tavern on Main tonight to have a beer before I came over here. I love sitting outside. I've loved it for the last couple of years that we've been doing it. I love what has happened up in Simpson Court, but I have to remind you that there are other people involved. There are tenants of mine and businesses down at the other end of Simpson Court who, yes, this does affect. So on one end, it's been great for them. On the other side, maybe it has been of a little, of a detriment for the other businesses. Again, I want to remind you that I am a small-town guy. I was talking to some of the people before about this. When I go downtown to shop, if I can't find a parking place within two or three parking places of the place that I'm going to, I do not stop. I come back maybe two or three hours later, or maybe I come back two days later. It's totally different if I were living in a city. If I were in New York or New Haven, I would think nothing of parking in a parking garage and walking three or four blocks to go to that store or wherever I'm going. In my hometown, I don't think that way. I'm a small-town guy. I want to be able to pull right up in front of this business. So I'm here to ask you, keep that in mind when you're making your decision tonight, and I know this is a very tough decision for all of you. Thank you.
My name is Betsy Bates, and I live in Wallingford. There's a couple of things that came up tonight, and first, I'll apologize because I didn't realize that each year in the past however many years you have had this discussion. So when I found out that tonight there was a meeting to possibly end something that we see as a huge benefit, I was like, "Wait, how can that be happening?" So tonight, listening, I know that the people that are leasing property for their restaurants pay more money than the people that are leasing down the street. I also know this is not a Gaetano thing. This, the businesses that benefit from the traffic that comes uptown during the entire summer/fall season is Center Street Brewing, Hidden Gem on Main, Archie Moore's, Knuckleheads, Michaels will soon be out in front, the Library, Mr. D's, Half Moon, and Gaetano's. That's a lot of businesses. When we walk uptown, we pass all of the businesses coming up on Center Street. Sometimes we'll see they have a special, sometimes we'll stop there. This is so much larger than the businesses that may benefit. This is the people, the citizens. We're benefiting. I don't know that, I'm fairly well-read, I'm fairly well-acclimated with things that are happening in our town. This is a really nice turnout for something that I hate to see end. And like Mr. Roz said, you don't want to set a precedent by start charging $100 and $100. And like Mr. Ross said, you don't want to set a precedent by start charging $150 a space because then any space in the town of Wallingford is now for sale. You don't want to charge people for how the public works, come out and do work. We pay for that. The Public Works is paid for the services that it provides in our town, which is setting up barriers for our events or setting up barriers for the seasonal generation of people being able to get out and socialize. You can't look at the extra dollars that a business makes because there's always room available to move closer to town. Those businesses chose to pay that money. It's not a matter of just Wednesday night with Twilight Tones or Thursday night with the DJ. It's Sunday mornings and Saturday mornings when you can go up and you can get breakfast or a cup of coffee or take a walk. It's eight spaces. The people at Body and Soul, they're aware of it. They can park instead of the directly in the space in front of them. They have to walk a little bit further. And I've had a cane and I've had a walker and I've had bad hips and I am overweight. They have to walk a little bit further from the opposite side. How many spaces did we increase behind TD? I don't know that information. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. With Mr. McGuire just now driving around, um, you, there's been a fantastic increase in the amount of parking spaces that are now available. There's nobody that comes to Wallingford now that should complain about parking. There's plenty of parking. This is not, in my opinion, an area where you want to start to make this a fiscal discussion because that's not what it is. This is a social citizen resident discussion. It is enjoyed by babies, multi-generations, what everybody has already said. And now I'm aware. And so if you need to make a different plan for next year, okay. But right now, to say this isn't going to happen, that's wrong. Did the businesses that I just named, all of them on both sides of the street, Ann Michaels, did they put in for a loss of revenue when this was taken away? Or did they plan on having this as their revenue as they should be able to? I think that important things have been said tonight. And I love the idea that Body and Soul is here. And I love that the businesses can possibly work together and that you can have some sort of way to make this work for everybody. But when it comes down to it, as a resident, I would be appalled if you voted to end this thing that benefits so many of us. Thank you.
Hello. Kevin Gaetano, 271 South Main Street, Wallingford. So I want to make this short and sweet because one, I'm sure you guys want to get out of here. I want to get out of here. The Rangers are playing. So I'm sure everyone wants to get out of here. So let's get, cut to the chase here. Christine, you're 100% right. You said it's too late to cut, you know, not do it this year. Personally, it's a good thing. We need to do this every year. And to do, to go through this and to put my sister Debbie through this crap every year, it's painful. So I think we need to look at it, what's fair for everybody. You have two new businesses on Center Street. They bought recently. They knew what they were getting when they bought. They don't have the outside seating. Well, that's what you bought there. You already knew what you had. Vinnie, I've known you a long time. I knew where your mind was going. And, you know, you were kind of asking opening questions and yeah, we were yelling answers. But, you know, open discussion, I think you're hearing all positive. It's positive for everybody. Sam, you're down there. I met the mayor sitting there. I told him he could put a sign in my front lawn, two of them, because I talked to him that night, listened to music. Yeah, we had a couple of cocktails, but whatever. But I got to meet him that night. So it's a good thing for everybody. You all go there. So I think we need to continue doing it. I think we need to get off as far as charging. That's just unheard of. I, I don't know how, and the only young lady just said $150 a spot. I'm going to start selling parking spots in front of my house. I mean, that's just, that's crazy. You can't, can't do that, you know? But, but I think there's a way that we can make this happen every year and not go through petition and voting and have Debbie call Vinnie every morning talking about what's going to happen. We don't need it. Let's just do it. It's a good thing for the town. Everybody enjoys it. Steve, I'll talk to Debbie. You're more than welcome to play outside. We'll have Body and Soul martinis or something. I'll talk to her, but you gotta keep the price down. Keep the price down on the band. But Steve does have a good band. I coached his son in baseball for years. So again, I want to get out of here. I'm sure you guys want to get out of here. Great turnout for everybody, not just for Gaetano's, but for Half Moon and Mr. D's. So please do the right thing and let's think about the future. Let's do the right thing. Closing off Center Street to Church Street, we should put that band stage right there and we should do that once a month. We, I did it when I was with Butterwise. We did it every Thursday night in Stanford. It was unbelievable. The town can make money. Buy a permit and sell alcohol and everybody makes out. I mean, and I'll be more than happy to go on the committee. Let's do it. I'm always good for, I'm always ready for a party. But really, thank you for what you guys do and I appreciate it. And let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay. Linda Belli, Body and Soul Day Spa, 26 North Main Street. So I don't want you to get the idea that, you know, we're dead set against Gaetano's and what they're doing. My thing is, and I've sent you a letter, that, you know, if you want to have the uptown music on Thursday night, there should be a way to close that whole parking lot at 3 o'clock. Get rid of the cars, put out your tables, put out your games, put out your music, whatever you want to do. And then at the end of the night, take them away. Now, when they do uptown for Halloween and for Christmas, that's blocked off with a temporary barrier, but there is a police officer there. So I don't understand why we can't do that at Simpson Court to have the music on Thursday night and make everybody happy. And then during the day, when other businesses need parking, it's available. And if Thursday night doesn't work, you want more than one night? Close it off on a Saturday night, 3 o'clock. Close the whole parking lot until Monday morning. I don't see why that can't work either. So it's up to you guys. I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much.
My name is Rick Vitale. I live at 143 North Little Sea Avenue, which is the house in which I grew up. And I love this town. I, I've lived all over this country and around the planet, actually. And there are things about Wallingford that are unique for me. I mean, a simple thing, we just have to look at our neighboring communities. They don't have, many of them don't have a downtown. There's no there there. We have a downtown. We call it uptown sometimes and we have to explain to people. But there is a there and a here in Wallingford. I moved most recently from West Hartford back to Wallingford. And I entertained the Realtor, she's actually a pretty, pretty, uh, leading Realtor in, in that area. And we were having lunch, uh, on Simpson Court. And she looked around and she said, you know, Rick, this looks like West Hartford ready to happen, West Hartford Center. And she, she was thinking of bringing some of her energy down here to Wallingford. That kind of togetherness we've heard about in many different ways. And I can't improve, uh, in any way on what people have said. So I would like simply to say that, that we need to keep focused on how precious this thing is that has arisen. We didn't know what we were planting or what you folks were planting when you dropped the seed of parking, uh, of, uh, of seeding extended on Simpson Court. It's a precious thing we have going now in Wallingford. Young kids, old folks, I'm old, we gather. It's a terrific time for us on Thursday evenings and on other evenings and times as well. I am reminded when I think of how precious it is of the words of the esteemed author H.L. Mencken. And I can only paraphrase him, who alluded to some of the roots of our town. He said, if one under, wants to understand the essence of New England puritanism, it is simply the haunting fear that someone, somewhere, is having a good time. Joy is not manageable in the sense that we can manage other things. And hallelujah, let's keep it that way. I'd like to end by making a small suggestion. Others, I'm sure, uh, can make ones that are far more expert. But I would like to suggest that, that, that the essence of what's going on uptown in Simpson Court be expanded. And other, other, uh, other, uh, say food establishments in town be drawn in. Shut down North Main Street from the corner to the outlet of Simpson Court on Thursday nights and put on tables. And let us really celebrate Wallingford. Let us have runners down Center Street to other restaurants. Really? Let's feed, feed everybody with whatever they want. Okay, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
All right. I won't make this long. We just ran from the Elk. So if anything that it means to you, we were watching you on YouTube and I said, I've got to run down. We love Wallingford and we have a blast.
Could you just give your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, right. Name and address, 211 Pomeroy Avenue in Meriden. And I'm a Wallingford Elk and, um,
And your name?
Tammy.
Tammy?
Pasden.
Thank you, Tammy.
Sorry, I didn't get the memo.
No, that's okay.
We ran down so fast. And for the record, I ran down with a bad hip. So I do empathize with those with disabilities. So maybe some more handicap parking, but we want the outdoor dining back. We have a blast. And to his, uh, to add on, instead of going to West Hartford, I want to spend my money here and I'm a good tipper. So thank you guys for the consideration.
Hi, Sheila from Body and Soul. And I just want to just say what Steve said too. We're not here to close anybody down or stop anybody from having a good time. We're really not. And we send a lot of our clients over there. We go there, um, and, and we just, we would like to see it continue to. The sad part is, is that when Linda and I lock the door at night and there's nobody there, it's like, why? You know, why are all these spots taking up? And, um, one thing I think nobody mentioned was the time span. Five and a half months, that's a long time. Five and a half months is a long time to keep it closed. And it's just not always full. And you know what? One thing I learned for sure here tonight is everyone in this room clearly loves Gaetano's. Okay? And we love Gaetano's too. And you know what? All right, Wallingford too. And it's that, I mean, it's clear, it's clear. And whether there's parking in the lot or there's parking on the sidewalk, these guys will get there. But I understand the party aspect of it too. So we're just asking for a compromise, maybe three months, as Linda said, maybe Thursday night, Saturday and Sunday night, just kind of meet in the middle. That's all. We love everybody.
Hi, I'm Karen Burke Demetriades and I live on 93 Liney Hall Lane in Wallingford. I just want to read a couple of comments of people, what they've said to me about this. It keeps us with the small town look and feel. Because it's breathtaking to come into this beautiful town, sit down and have a meal on a gorgeous, warm evening. It's community minded to share bread together. People are accepting. People who are alone invite others to sit with them. Residents run into neighbors they don't see often. It's welcoming, friendly, warm. Outsiders are in awe of the peaceful joining. Awesome, exuberant, festive, heartwarming. Joyous, just the warmth when you drive by and see the smiling faces. Elegant, it's the character of downtown Wallingford. That's it.
Very nice. Thank you.
Hi, Breland Cash 220 Woodhouse App. So the only thing that, if parking is the main issue with all of this, then, okay, so the three businesses take up eight spots. That means there's 24 spots left. Why can't they have their own designated spots with like signs in front of them saying that this is for Mind, Body and Soul? And then that will take, that'll alleviate all the other issues. Thanks.
John, with turnout, 3 Region Court in 124 Center Street. I've operated a business in this town for 24 years. When I came to this town 24 years ago, it was empty storefronts. And it wasn't great. But I came because I believed in Wallingford. I was living here. We were raising our children here. And I could see it was a great town. I came from another town that wasn't so great, north. I came from Meriden. I had a business in Meriden for 25 years. It's a different town. But what I enjoy with Wallingford, and I always have, I support Wallingford. I sat up there for 12 years. The pandemic hit. It changed the whole flavor of the town. It changed my business. And I got to say, it changed it for the good. It made me rethink my business and how I was going to approach it differently and, and, and it kind of hit the rewind button. And what happened with the uptown, out of, kind of out of desperation to help the restaurant, the various restaurants up there, we went to the outside dining and it worked. So out of something bad, we got something good. We got some outside dining. And it's really worked well. The feedback that I get from customers, and I get 90% of my business is out of town. Not Wallingford people, it's out of town people. I have advertised heavily in New Haven, Southern Connecticut and the shoreline. So I get a lot of people from Madison, Guilford, Branford, New Haven, way down as far as, uh, Norwalk and Greenwich. And they come up to town and they'll come in the middle of the day and then they'll go, what? This is a nice town. I says, yeah, no kidding. You know, we're not Greenwich, but we, we hold our own. And, um, they really enjoy it. The next thing they ask me, where can I go for lunch? I says, well, we have restaurants downtown. There's some great ones that just came in. And, uh, other than that, I send them for, what do you want? I go through the whole thing. What do you want for lunch? And da, 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 da. And I send them someplace else uptown. And they come back and they say, wow, that's fantastic. You have, there's, I can sit outside and have something to eat. I says, well, it gets better. If you come back Thursday night, there's music. And I've had customers come from way Southern Connecticut on a Thursday night to come up here because they think that's the greatest thing. I says, but don't you have outside dining? And they said, yeah, we can go out on the sidewalk and eat, but we don't have music. And I say to the people from Madison, I said, but it's Madison. You've got Long Island Sound. Yeah, but we don't have music. So, you know, it, it's, it's a little niche that we've carved out. The parking, the parking we have discussed for, for, before I was involved with town, there was always some parking issue that came up. We do not have a parking problem in Wallingford. We have an enforcement problem. A gentleman came here tonight and he mentioned something that struck a nerve with me. He says, 9:00 in the morning, I see people walking, employees of some of these businesses that are on, in Simpson Court will park there all day long. that are in Simpson Court will park there all day long, take their coffee, take their lunch, go in the building, and they're there all day long. That's two-hour parking up there. Why isn't it enforced? I've been fighting this for 24 years. I've had people in apartments above me park in the street. I have to call, I've got the PD on speed dial on my store phone. I call at least 20 times a month and say, "I got a car parked out here, it's been over two hours. Okay, we'll send somebody down." Sometimes they come, sometimes they don't. It's not a priority, it's a $10 fine. So I think that's something that we need to look at, is how to solve the parking problem in Simpson Court during the day so some of these businesses, like Body and Soul, and there's room for their customers. It's not being taken up by an employee of another business. But I hope tonight we, that you folks vote for this. And I like Christina's idea, is come back at it, maybe through an ordinance committee, and settle this once and for all. And, you know, it's going to take a little work to come up with a compromise. I heard a lot of good ideas tonight. We heard some interesting ideas. But it's something that really needs to be looked at again. And for once and for all, so not every year we have to put out petitions or have people come and sit in the audience at nine o'clock at night. So hopefully, this will get solved. But at least this year, let's keep it. And if you do keep it, can we go past, celebrate? Last year, those blocks, everything got taken down prior to celebrate. And people, the feedback I got from people that I meet on the street is, "Why? Why not keep it during Celebrate?" So it's something to think about. So, because I don't know what the dates, I haven't heard anything about when the starting date is and when the ending date is. So it seems like it's kind of up to you guys to set that parameter tonight if you decide to go forward with this. Thank you.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council. I guess my issue with this, so I'm not a frequent attendee at the Twilight Tunes, but it seems awesome. And every time you drive by, there's a lot of people. And I love the party atmosphere uptown. And everyone seems to love the businesses involved. So this kind of seems like a business problem that should have some sort of a business solution. Because essentially what you're asking is, because you're not coming here saying, like, "Make this fair." You're saying, like, "Bring the hammer of government down and tell, like, the, tell people where they're going, you know, what parking spaces are allowed to support what businesses and so on." So that's kind of where I take pause. Because I, whatever solution, if the businesses are all agreeable to it, then I really have no issue with whatever they want to do with Simpson Court. If we wanted to close Simpson Court entirely to cars and have it be something completely different, that's something we could look at. But I have an issue with just us just, you know, dropping the hammer on this and saying, "This is how it's got to be." You know, because the business owners can't agree. They all pay taxes, they're all good people. Everyone seems to like everyone else's businesses. So I'm not, I'm unclear as to why we can't seem to work this issue out. So that's sort of where my head is on this. I'll defer to the rest of the council. Mr. Fishbein?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we take a 10-minute break.
Second.
All right. No, I don't have an issue with that. I think if a solution can be reached, I think that's the way to go. So let's take a 10-minute recess.
We were on here before him.
All right, I'll bring this meeting back to order. And starting with Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Obviously, I wrote down a lot of notes, a lot of good comments and things. And I think I was hearing a couple things I wanted to clear up. You know, "Let's just do it this year, we'll figure out." There were meetings this past year. This isn't like we didn't talk about this. Counselors were there, WCI, businesses, phone calls, emails. Like, this isn't like we didn't talk about this all year and just waited until tonight. And it sounds like there's really two different issues, or two different things going on. A lot of people are concerned or upset about the Thursday night event versus what happens with it the rest of the week. I'm suggesting that Thursdays at like 4, we take a, you take a patrol car, a car that's not being used, a police car, park it at the entrance, block it off. The lot will clear out in the remaining couple hours. And the whole Simpson Court can be open for whatever people want. Dancing chairs, music, whatever it is, and give the whole space. You know, what we do over on the green here on Wednesdays is sponsored and run by Park and Rec. What's happening on Thursdays is entirely private business. It's a combination of the different restaurants in the area that started this and got together that had outdoor dining. If we can help facilitate without getting anybody's way, I think this is an easy way to do it. And it allows people to enjoy and more easily take all of the, partake from all the different restaurants. If that's really what the concern is. Well, and you can, you can sit outside. We have normal dining. To extend it into the parking lot is you're extending the restaurant into the parking lot. Just that one restaurant. But the concern that most people talked about, according to all the notes, were, was the Thursday night event, the Thursday night activity.
Ladies and gentlemen, let Mr. Laffin finish and then...
And that would be the answer. If you, if you are hardset on Gaetanos, as the case is here, four, eight spaces, whatever it is, then it goes back to the, what I said in the beginning. I think there needs to be, you know, we can't give everybody in town the parking spaces. We don't own those other larger roads, like in front of Archie Moore's or down Center Street. Those are state things, it's a bigger deal. We've talked about. And that would be a whole process to figure out. And it's not that it can't be done, but that's a whole process to figure out for the future. Like New Haven. New Haven, you cross the sidewalk, and they have, like, little sections set up in the street, in the parking areas. That's something to discuss. But we have discussed, because again, there have been meetings. If, I mean, and so this is what it is. If you want to protect the Thursday nights for this event, that's an easy solution. If you're interested, if you're dead-set on having the outdoor dining, that's a separate issue. They are not necessarily related.
Is that a motion?
I don't know that we can motion the police department to park a car there. That would require participation from the administration.
If I may?
Please.
I'm not, I'm not opposed. I just, I'd like to have a conversation with the police administration. So I understand their comfort level.
All right, moving on to Mrs. Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I kind of feel like there's, that's sort of still on the table. I was going to make a motion, but I guess I'll make my motion anyway. But I'm not opposed to the idea that Counselor Laffin suggested. But I'm going to move that we allow outdoor dining in the same square footage or less as the 2023 season in Simpson Court for the 2024 season. So that's the motion. If anybody wants to add stipulations or a timeline or compensation or anything else, you know, certainly feel free to amend the motion. I'm just, I'm encouraged by the openness to work together for a solution. I know, you know, I heard a lot tonight where the businesses were kind of throwing ideas to maybe work together, meet up with each other, and try to work out whatever the issues are. We talked, we heard about the parking enforcement, that that's maybe an issue that we need, the town needs to look at a little better. So I'm, I'm okay with doing this again for this year just because of the timeline. And I, but I think we really, really need to, once and for all, figure out what we want to do going forward. So that is my motion.
Second.
All right, discussion on the motion. Mr. Testa.
Regarding coming up with alternatives, what I would discourage is somebody just coming up with one and throwing it out there and then having us say, "Oh, okay, maybe that is a good one." Because that, that will, that would require a lot of discussion. So I don't want to see just, for the sake of coming up with something, making up an alternative off the cuff, which I could certainly do. But I don't think that's appropriate. If we're not, if we're not going to approve things as they currently are, then we need to have a long discussion and flesh out all the potential alternatives. That, that's the only reasonable, professional way to do things. So please... So please, I would beg you, my colleagues, not to just throw out an alternative for the sake of having one, because that will carry with it potentially ramifications we don't want to deal with. Because I can, I mean, I suggested one, somebody suggested shut the whole thing down for a day or two, starting at four o'clock. I don't, I kind of like that one, just because you can just do that with barriers, you don't have to use blocks, just shut it down like we do for Celebrate Wallingford. But what's the drawback to that? You have no parking spaces at Simpson Court, but you have a pretty damn big dance floor. And that's cool, too. So what I'm getting at is if we start throwing out ideas, I'm all for, and that's, believe it or not, that's what I was looking for. I was hoping by sharing all of my concerns, that we could come up with an alternative that would not shut down that section in the manner it's being shut down every day, every night. So maybe we can have another talk about this, as I think we should, and potentially talk about alternatives. But I hope we don't start throwing out solutions that potentially could lead to bigger problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council on the motion?
Mr. Chairman. If, for nothing else than the purposes of having out there, I move to amend the motion that the, that be for $150 a space a month. Just, just as it was, that's, that's fine, if there's no second.
Okay, motion fails, or the amendment fails, rather. On the motion itself, any comments from the public? Sir. Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Ross, I, I'm sorry, I called on the gentleman behind you with the blue shirt.
Pardon?
I, I called on the gentleman behind you with the blue shirt, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, no, that was my error. Correct. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Ross.
So why don't the town of Wallingford pay me? So the bars don't have to put any money in.
That's not a part.
Just like they pay the bands on their trailer. Just like they pay us at Park and Rec. Why don't they set up a fund for that, and then I'll do the music that way? It gives them something.
Now, you get paid now to do the, to do the entertainment on Thursday nights?
All those bars pitch in, correct.
Okay, okay, I was, that was my question, is where's the money?
So, you know, if that's only going to happen one night a week, so 25, 24, 23 Thursday nights, maybe I should charge what the bands pay on the trailer.
The motion doesn't include any charges.
Pardon?
The motion doesn't include any charges.
Okay.
Now, right now, the motion on the table is to continue as is. Period, period. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's all right, thank you for the clarification. Mr. Letourneau, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't picking up what he was putting down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the motion, because the question was asked, but it's, I don't think it's crystal clear. The motion is to keep it the same or less, I heard that. Is that correct?
If you could repeat the motion, please.
Yes, the motion is to allow outdoor dining in the same square footage or less as the 2023 season in Simpson Court for the 2024 season.
Okay, I, I would like to see it, if it can be done, I'd like to see it amended to keep it not or less, but to keep it the same. And, you know, at least that way, it's, it's what we have now. There's nothing more, nothing less, it's exactly what we have. But I think we, we kind of got sidetracked a little bit with, with Thursday nights and the music, and, and, you know, it, it, it's, it's a great thing, it's, it's a fantastic thing, but it's more than that, it's more than that. It's when, every night that these restaurants are open up there, whether there's, my wife and I go up, on nights there's no music, but it's a gorgeous night, we want to eat outside. So it's, you know, we're going beyond the entertainment and, and getting where we can go out and socialize on a quiet night with no music, and have a, have a great dinner up town. And I, I just wanted to throw that out there, but I'd like to see that motion amended, if it can be, thank you.
Yep, he can step up. Yes, if you could speak into the microphone, though.
So, um, again, every time we lock the door, five, six, seven o'clock, whatever time we get out of there, yeah, sorry about that, excuse me?
Don't be rude.
Yeah, whatever time we leave, whether it be five, six, seven, and we've had pictures where there's a ton of people out there, I don't know where they all went, there's, that's just a handful of them, okay? Most of the time, there's really no need to close the lot for that long. And I just think it's just, you don't need to do it every night.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know what else to say, I mean, I get it, but are all you guys there every night?
Bill Comer for Broadway Drive. I happen to agree with Mr. Laffin last year about this item, and I also agree with what he's saying now. I know it's very infrequent that I do agree with Mr. Laffin, but I admit it when he's, he's right, and he's right on this one. My suggestion, which I thought was a great idea, because obviously he took notes and he said the, the thrust of this was the Johnny Ross, or whoever's out there with the cartoon and Cinderella and Taylor Swift and everything else, was the whole purpose of why everybody's coming up here. Wasn't because somebody had the best chicken wings and they had an extra couple tables out there, it was all about the community, bringing everybody up there, which I agree with. And I also heard from Mr. McGuire, who owns probably at least half of the block, maybe not, maybe even more, and he, he also has a concern, because his tenants are paying rent that they don't have accessibility to those parking spots. This thing should go back to pre-COVID, and I also commend Mr. Laffin, because he did come up with a solution. Maybe he's better off the table this right now, because the mayor, Cervone, stated that he'd have to check with the police department. So if it takes one more week or a couple days, and just come back and have a meeting just to do the vote, it would make sense, because then it solves all the problems. You still have Johnny Ross, the entire Simpson Court is, is closed off, Mr. McGuire and his tenants are happy, and, and everybody else is happy. Because if I was across the street, which I'm not, but if I was, and I was Knuckleheads, Michaels, or Archie Moore's, I'd be asking for the same deal. Here's my 150 bucks, put your blocks up, I want the same thing, because they're the ones that are losing out, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, coming back to the council. Mr. Fishbein.
You know, we haven't had a lot of people in this room in a while, but I got to say that there's been a little unruliness that I'm just not used to in this room tonight. So I just hope, I wish that everybody would just get along, because it's really unusual, some of the comments that I'm hearing here tonight. You know, just, we've talked some, somewhat about the history of how we got here. I just want to point out that the only time that the council voted on this was last year. Previous to that, it was by executive order from the governor to try and give some relief to the restaurants, that outdoor dining was approved, and, you know, that's how it came to be in the wake of the pandemic. This body didn't have anything to do with putting the blocks in Simpson Court initially and all of that. So, you know, I, I think there was a statement made that for four years, we've authorized this, I just want to be clear, and it, it's not, I'm just trying to level out the history here. I guess a question for the motion on the table is what is contemplated as far as dates, understanding that we're going into June, so is it anticipated, should the motion pass, that this would begin June 1 through a particular date? I think that's something that the public should know. So I'll temporarily defer to the motion maker.
Thank you. So I said after I made the motion, if anybody wanted to add timeline, stipulation, compensation, feel free to amend, so the motion's open to whatever anyone wants to add to that.
Okay, thank you for that answer. The other question, I know we did receive a copy of a deck page for insurance representing to be, I think involving the parking lot. I, I noticed on there that the town of Wallingford, who owns the property, is not mentioned as being an insured party, so I'm, I guess I'll ask the mayor. Do we know what the status is of, like, for last year at least? What was, were we insured, and by whom?
I, I don't know what proof of insurance was provided last year, I can check with our risk manager in the morning.
Okay, I appreciate that, because this appears to be, it says the certificate holder is 5060 Simpson Court, which I believe is one of the property owners, and they don't own the property that we're talking about here tonight. The other thing is, you know, we, we were submitted some pictures, and they indicate from September of 2023, July of 2023, June of 2023, and May of 2023, there's various of the outdoor dining that we already authorized back in 2013, is not being affected by what we're doing here tonight, you know, so sidewalk dining being distinguished from parking lot dining. But I do note that, and you know, Counselor Testa and I were up here, we spent a lot of time talking about how do we protect the general public and all of that, and, and we did write into the ordinance and about there being a structure, a sturdy structure that separates, in fact, I, I have the ordinance, it requires, it says the outdoor sidewalk dining area must be separated from the remainder of the public sidewalk by a fence, railing, or other divider made of sturdy material. That's already the law, okay? But the pictures that we were given, there is no divider, which it, it looks like, in the photograph at least, and I know this is, we've talked, one of the meetings we had was about can these businesses do be ADA compliant, because one of the portions of the ordinance requires there be a four-foot area, because that's what ADA requires, of actual sidewalk. And that's been one of the complaints I've gotten here about this whole thing. And I think earlier, somebody had discussed the separation, if you're going to have parking lot dining, you're going to have sidewalk dining right adjacent to that, as they start to bleed into each other, and that's the effect of not having that, that structure. I think that's got to be worked out, some way, shape, or form. I mean, there should be compliance, there should be separation, you know, we've had a few people in our town motorized wheelchairs that were, were hit by cars, right? Because they couldn't traverse the sidewalk, they're in the roadway. I don't know, I can't think of a scenario where that would happen, but I'm certainly sensitive to that. So I don't know how we deal that, that in the context of the motion that's before us. I'm just bringing my concerns to the body, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, anyone else? Mr. Testa?
Certain, just points that have brought up, been brought up, certainly argue for bringing this to the ordinance committee, for an in-depth discussion, an ongoing in-depth discussion. I, it would seem to me that it would probably be reasonable that the issue we're discussing tonight be incorporated into the overall outdoor dining ordinance, simply because it's dealing with the same kind of thing. And that won't be resolved tonight, of course. So that's something I, regardless of what happens, we need to do that, I think. I guess the only thing I would ask, I would add after all this, is does it, does it appear even possible that we could pass an amended motion this evening that would allow for partial use of the lot as it's being used already? In other words, we need to talk to the police, we need to talk to Public Works. As I said before, just throwing out an amended motion is probably irresponsible. If I had my way, I would prefer that this program, if you want to call it that, continues, but not seven days a week. I made that clear. How can that be accomplished? I don't know, I don't think we're going to do that tonight, unless, because if we do it, it's going to be, unfortunately, the only word I can come up with is inappropriate, it would be half-baked, how's that? And we always like to do things full-baked. So I think we need to think about that as well. I don't think anybody can answer my question. You know, could we come up with something and say, you know, Wednesday through Saturday, Thursday through Saturday, we're going to close things down the way they are in this current program, and the rest of the week, it's not going to be? Or are we going to just shut down the whole thing on only two, Thursday, Friday, Saturday? I mean, those are a couple of ideas. I don't, I don't see how we could do that tonight, with any kind of surety that it would be done efficiently and appropriately. Because we don't have the, we don't have the departments here to, to talk about what that might entail. And so it's what I'd like to see, and I think that might be where we go with the ordinance committee. I made a lot of things clear about how I felt about this earlier, I still feel that way, but at this point, I'm okay with approving this for this season and taking it up again.
All right, on to Mr. Laffin.
Thanks. To answer Mr. Ross's question, I would 100% support discussing and planning Park and Rec cooperation or government takeover of that type of event, it's very proven to be popular, it's proven to be very popular. I'm not objected to that at all. So however that event needs to continue, I think it's very clear that the community really enjoys that event, and that's something that I'm open to us looking at. That's, again, that's separate, the one's really being discussed here tonight, though.
Anyone else at the council? All right, Madam Quick, will you please call the role on the motion?
Harmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Regan?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tatta?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
I vote no, and the motion fails. Um, is there another motion, another motion on this item? All right, moving on to the next item. So the next item is discussion possible action regarding a fire department review. Chief, you're welcome to come to the dais if you'd like. All right, chief, thank you. If you could introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Acting Fire Chief Sam Wilson.
Deputy Fire Chief Mike Shaw.
All right. And so I had asked for this item to be put on the agenda. So we'd had some discussion about this before with the prior chief. He was not, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, we're trying to conduct additional business. If you could take it out in the hallway, if you need to have a discussion, I would appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So I had requested this item on the agenda based on some discussion we'd had with the prior chief. And now the sort of situation we find ourselves in now is we've lost two chiefs in sort of a short amount of time. And I think that now while we're on the hunt for a new chief would be the perfect time to enter into a study like this, to sort of inform our decisions moving forward. Now, obviously, you have intimate, intimate knowledge of the department because you haven't been around a while, but there's been a sort of a, to be polite, there's been a lot of sort of dissent amongst, I'm hearing a lot of complaints about various aspects of the department, and not all with management. I'm hearing complaints about the union, I'm hearing complaints about, you know, about sort of all aspects of the fire department, right? And so I guess as a part-time counselor, I'm trying to say to myself, how do we address some of these issues, right, that the fire department seems to be stuck in and we're burning through chiefs? And so I want to get us on a track, I guess, where everyone's sort of on the same page. So I'm curious to hear your thoughts, I'm curious to hear the rest of the council's thoughts on perhaps engaging in a study at this point or a review of the fire department to get sort of an outside view of what's going on. Mr. Testa?
It's no secret that there's been a, an ongoing campaign for the last four to five years from certain individuals, and this is not meant to be derogatory, to present what they believe to be a reasoned and well-studied critique of changes that have been made in the fire department since about 2019. That was, came about in various ways. I refer to them as the social media TED Talks as well as other things. And again, none of that is meant to be trite or derogatory. They're well thought out, they're well researched, but they are pointing out those discussions, those issues were directly related to changes made several administrations ago. And this has been ongoing and those, you know, and that's continued. We've also heard at various times from members of the rank and file, be it union representatives or others, about decisions made regarding the overall structure of the emergency response program, a system, staffing, hiring, and so on and so forth. And so we've been aware of this. And it wasn't too long ago that this came up. And my thought at that time was, we just got a new chief. And I felt that he and his immediate staff deserved an opportunity to, you know, take over the department and do their own review of things and, and see what they think needed to be done before we stepped in with, with something like an outside study. Now, here we are, for whatever reason, doesn't matter, we're now having another change in the administration. And we've also, I guess the, the calls for change, the calls for an in-depth review and study, and in some might say calls for accountability. I have to stress that because the wording is things that we're given are fairly strident and the calls for something have risen again, and, but they've gotten my attention. I've always tended to, I don't want to say respect, and I don't want to say blindly follow, but my point is I've always tended to accede to department heads, organizational heads, chiefs of our public safety organizations, and believe it or not, even to the mayor at times, because when it comes to administration, especially in organizations that have a military-type structure or chain of command, I think it's important to do that. I try to give as much respect as I can to the professionals who we have hired to run our departments and organizations. Now, if things are pointed out where there is, you know, it appears that there are problems, well, of course, I'm going to want to know, get some answers. I say that because we're now going to be getting a new chief. And I, and I just thought about it. So if I was going to be the new chief in Wallingford, well aware of what's going on, I would hope so, well aware of what's going on in the department right now, and deciding to come in and, and take that job, would I want, how would I want that job to work? Would I want to come in and be able to do what I believe I've been hired to do and what I'm committed to doing and what my professional experience qualifies me to do? And that's to do a top-down review of the organization that I now control and put together an operational plan, strategic plan, whatever it might be, for that organization? Or do I want to come in and as I'm thinking about doing that, I am told that the folks that are hiring me are going to have an outside organization come in and do a complete review of things and recommend the changes or if not, whatever? While I'm starting to try to get my own, myself established as a strong, competent leader, it's like being hired as a CEO and the board says, oh, by the way, we're bringing in a consultant, Bob and Bob, to, to work side by side with you as you take over the business. I just think that that, that gets you off on, on the wrong foot from a position of putting confidence into somebody. So I was warming up to the idea of bringing someone in and doing a study because I thought maybe it's a good time. But now that we're hiring a new chief, I think, I think it's not a good time to do that. I think we would owe it to the new person to allow them to do that, because that's what we'd be hiring them for. That's just my opinion based on, you know, whatever experience I've had over the years in various organizations. I think that's all I had, but, yeah, I think that's enough for now. Thank you very much.
So before we go to Councilor Laffin, my counterpoint would be that the businessman would hire consultants to do all kinds of things like this, right? Because in business, you can never know every aspect of your business, and so you always go outside and hire a consultant to see if you can do things better or more efficiently. So I think that it's sort of in town, we haven't done things like this, right? But the mayor asked for a study of several public buildings to determine what the repairs are going to be. Now, it's not that he doesn't rely on Public Works because we rely on them all the time, but this is a big job that requires an outside view and maybe you want to get an expert opinion, you want something of that nature. And so I don't think that this is something to be afraid of. I think more information is always a positive thing. And so I think we, you know, if you look at the, having a study as a critique of the department, I think that's sort of where you're wrong. Like, the Board of Ed does studies all the time. When I was on the Board of Ed, we did a study on special ed, and it's not that they thought there were deficiencies, it's just how could we operate better? How could we do better for, you know, for families and so on? So I think it's easy to put it in a category like this is going to be a villain, but I mean, a study's a study, it's information. If you get the study and everything's fine, then everything's fine. But if there's changes to be made, then you make the decision at that point as the administration of the department, whether you move forward with changes or not. It's just more information for them to have in their toolkit. And I'm sorry, Mr. Laffin, for taking up your time.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Councilor Testa's comments. I do, I do agree with, with you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a vision to what you think this will look like? Or, and the counter to the, to a new chief coming in is, you know, a look at all this would be, would be information of what is the situation? Even in a study that might include recommendations, there are recommendations, and I would expect any new chief to know how to handle those recommendations, whether they're good or bad. But it may actually help to have the information in some sort of summary of what's going on and what are the processes or procedures or what's the situation, all kind of in one place. So I, so I'll end with just was, is there a vision already in mind when you put this on the agenda for what this would look like or how it would happen or?
Yeah, yeah. So I guess sort of in business, right? If you make a change or an innovation and then you either think it works or it doesn't work, like, what are the criteria by which you determine, you know, why to make the change? Or if you have a perceived problem, like, how do you get to what's the root cause of that problem, right? How do you, like, problem solve? So my thought was just more of a top-to-bottom review of the department, you know, kind of all, taking a peek at all aspects. Or I guess what, you know, depending on the cost, obviously, is a huge factor. But so it was sort of a top-to, top-to-bottom review of the department. In the time that I've been on the council, the fire department did the enterprise fund for the ambulances, right? Which I thought was innovative and I supported at the time. It kind of didn't work out, so we kind of moved away from it. But it's like, you know, as a part-time counselor, I'm not sure if it, did it fail because it was like inherently it wasn't going to work? You know, there could be a lot of like steps or reasons that go into why things work or don't work. And so for me, this is more about as some, as an outsider who doesn't, who knows very little about fire service, right? Other than that, when I dial 911, they show up. But I just want to get, make an informed decision as far as how we manage our fire service from this, you know, side of the business. Does that make sense? Anyone else? Mr. Reynolds? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Fishbein has been on the list for a while.
I think a tool for a new chief coming in that may be of something that would be of assistance is, is some sort of report like this. I know one of the concerns that we had brought up over the last few years was overtime. The ambulance situation. I know I got into it with the prior administration because, you know, we, there are certain fees. You have the ability to petition the state to raise those fees. My understanding was there were situations where bills weren't getting paid and there was an issue that the administration didn't want to collect those bills because, you know, Wallingford residents. And that's perhaps a policy or philosophical situation. I see you shaking your head.
Never heard of that.
Yeah. I, I think that was when Chief Heidger was here, because certainly the, well, when the ambulance situation was originally established, as Councilor Marone says, it was set up like an enterprise fund, which, you know, it's supposed to fund itself through billing and it just, you know, it's constantly revolving. And that's a great financial thing if you can do that. It's, it's unique to have an ambulance, municipal ambulance service, and if it can pay for itself, amen, right? But it didn't, it wasn't paying for itself, so it sort of went away. You know, I have to say, it's difficult for me to watch like Chicago Fire. I like watching the cop shows, but Chicago Fire, you know, because being trapped in a building with fire, you know, where you can't get out is, is a troubling thing for me. And I will share, very appreciative that last Monday I was able to go over to Central Fire Headquarters, so Chief Shaw and, you know, actually participate. And it gave a totally new perspective on what fire does. And I would appreciate, I would encourage my fellow counselors to, if you have the opportunity, to do something like that. But, you know, it's difficult for us to look at something on paper. We get the report, right? The annual report that's done by the chief, usually very well done, but there's a lot of tech stuff in there that I don't know as a layperson. As I said to Chief Shaw the other day, every second that I was on that property, I think I learned something. And, and I, my days aren't usually like that, quite frankly. It was a very enriching many hours, so I'm very appreciative of that. But I, you know, it's the one department that I get a lot of complaints about, and it's not, it's not like the person who, you know, had a fire at that. Nobody complains about, you know, fire getting to the house on time. In fact, I shared a story years ago with a line to my, from the pole to my house caught on fire, and I'm watching the thing, the fire actually come to the house, and I called and, you know, and the fire department was there like within a minute. I mean, it's amazing, right? And I'm very appreciative of that. I don't hear, but the complaints that I hear are like, like rank and file. And it's the only department that I hear stuff rank and file. So I think it's healthy to have somebody look at this, and I know it was done years ago. I think somebody presented us with a report that was done maybe 15 years ago. I don't know how we potentially go about this. I don't know what they cost, but I think, I think it's a healthy, healthy exercise. So, but I, you know, I just, I, I can't say it enough. I very much appreciate what, what you guys do. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds, thank you for your patience.
I, I too, I don't have a problem with, you know, looking into, you know, how a department of any kind can look for efficiencies or, you know, go through a self-assessment or a long-term assessment. I guess my only, I would imagine that this would be sort of top to bottom. This would be about sort of like the buildings as well as the equipment as well. Are we just looking at staffing? I mean, what would be the focus?
So if you're asking me, I hadn't considered buildings. I guess I thought like resources and, you know, like the equipment, the staffing, training, like all the sort of, so I hadn't considered buildings, but I guess that could be a part of it.
I, I mean, I just, I think if we're going to do something and it has some sort of a long-term attachment to it, then we should be looking at the facilities themselves, too. I mean, if nothing else, just to look at the life. I mean, I took tours of, to the facilities, amazing. You know, I don't doubt that they're, you know, up to speed or whatever. I would just, I think if we're going to take the opportunity to assess something, we should to assess something, we should try to look at all of it. And obviously, you know, you know, being in research, you know, sort of like an independent observer would be, you know, putting it, you know, sort of trying to remove as much as we can from anybody who, you know, is attached to this stuff. Just so it's unbiased, but those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So from my understanding, bringing this on the agenda is that we're possibly looking to commission an independent third-party review of the department, you know, to get some type of pulse as to what's going on. I'm not sure we're questioning operations, policies, procedures, maintenance on vehicles, et cetera, here. We're looking more at something like peer assessments. And I'm, you know, taking a look online. You're seeing that the opportunities for even other jurisdictions to come in, you know, possibly with similar unions, possibly without, to try to give it an objective. I mean, we're not looking top-down. Here's the manual, you know, it's a 13-minute response time, making it up, of course, you know, for X, Y, and Z. And this is what we use on certain types of, on fires. I think we've got those pretty well-established. The quality of service from the Fire Department is exceptional. We have a people problem. And we have a communication problem, perhaps. And that's where I think the focus of the consultants, the assessments, those types of things really need to happen, unless I'm, you know, I'm totally there. I've been impressed with, in visiting each of you and going through the processes and just seeing the element there. It's just something else doesn't seem to jive. And how do we fix that? So just food for thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, thank you, Counselor Regan. And actually, you know, I echo your thoughts because I, every, all my dealings with the administration of the Fire Department has been outstanding, right? And they've always been very respectful and always provided information. But I also am painfully aware that, you know, what I understand about firefighting, you know, is very little, right? So, and that's sort of my thrust. And so if we wanted to limit it to, you know, to any particular factor, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that. This, I haven't made a motion on this yet. And in the discussion, I think, I don't even know what the costs would be or what the particulars would be. So Mayor, I haven't asked for, you know, we've kind of had some discussions about this. Would it be possible to get some ideas as far as what the possibilities are and costs, and then come back at another meeting to talk about particulars?
Yes, thank you. So I have taken the opportunity to call one of our former chiefs, Pete Struble. He's an academic, teaches in a graduate program at University of New Haven. And had previously contributed some research services when he had joined that program. And we talked about what the variety of options and opportunities are, and they seem quite costly, potentially six figures. But I did ask him if he had the same ability to provide resources from the graduate program. And he told me that, at this point, the entire graduate program is virtual. It's online, so they don't have bodies in Connecticut to send up here to look at stuff. You know, he did offer the opportunity to meet. He'll be back in Connecticut next week. And perhaps we can sit down with him and go over what the range of opportunities are to have this done and what the potential costs are that we're looking at.
Okay. Well, then I guess, then I guess my motion would be if the council would permit me to meet with the mayor and former chief Struble to have a discussion to bring back to the council later with more data.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion on the motion, Counsel Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would this not be appropriate for an RFP? Or we were pre-chosing who we're going to have the study with? Or what would be the process?
I don't think that's necessarily inappropriate at the, when you decide to go forward. But, you know, you need to figure out which version you want to do, what you're willing to spend, where the money's going to come from, and that variety of things. So that could be the direction we end up going in.
So this discussion, the motion that's on the table, this discussion with a former chief is not, that's not committing us to working with that former chief? You're just basically gathering information?
He is just offering assistance.
Okay. Okay. The only other thing I wanted to say, too, Mr. Chairman, is just that I, for the public's benefit, I, I mean, I know this has kind of like been discussed for years, and I just, I don't want the public to get the misconception that there's an issue with the service of the fire service in Wallingford. There's not. We have the best of the best, high-level paramedic service, ALS, BLS. They do everything. You know, if you call, they're there. The Fire Department has a presence, even if we're out of, you know, the ambulances aren't there, and we have to rely on backup from AMR or Hunters, the Wallingford Fire Department shows up. So there's a presence of the Fire Department at every call. And the service they provide is second to none. So I just don't want the public to get the misconception that there's an issue with the service of the fire and EMS in town, because there's not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
I just read everything Counsel Tatta just said. So, it's good.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief. You know, no disrespect, please.
No, I was given some space because I wasn't quite sure. After a lot of conversations throughout the week when I saw this on the agenda, obviously, we've been over this time and time again. We've provided you guys with a lot of statistical data. That's what we do as fire administrators. We pretty much extrapolate statistical data. And Counsel Laffin asked me, "How many pages would be below?" And at one time, I said, "Thousands of pages all the time when we're looking at things." Been very fortunate to be able to get in research tools that we utilize every single day. And that's what your studies and your consultants would be using, is these research tools. And as I've discussed numerous times over again, where do you think they're going to get the data from? The guy sitting right here. They're not going to come in and start mining their own data. They're going to ask us to pull response numbers. They're going to start asking us to pull numbers that are related to staffing. And that's where this data is going to come in. And that we're certainly happy to kind, to work within whatever parameters that the council decides. I don't think that it was, that was ever not the case that, as fire administrators, that we think it's a bad idea to study. But to have reviews, like we talked about in Southington and Manchester, you have to be prepared for the outcomes of what the study is going to give to you. And I just, it's our job to make the council and the mayor aware of what these studies have brought forward in the past. And that was kind of part of the statement that I had, depending on where we were going to go over. So the last part of it was, as your professional fire administrators, we would advocate that there's an RFP, if that's what you decide to do, created by all the stakeholders for a review of their fire department. That would include those members of the public that are concerned about the response model, members of the town council, both career and volunteer members, and the departments of fire administrators. If we are, all are able to get into a room and have a conversation about perceived problems, perhaps, and then actually talk about the facts on the table. The difficult thing that, when I've, I'm a consumer of these studies. I just read them and kind of look at what they're trying to say and where are they trying to go to. The unfortunate thing with these reviews is it's, a lot of them never actually get put into play because there's significant costs associated with them. I think that's the line that we toe as fire administrators. And I know you've heard former, both of the former chiefs say, is you have to match the service delivery with what the town is ready to pay. It's very easy as a fire administrator to have a study and say, "We're going to move away from 1720 and get into 1710." Because as a fire administrator, whatever that comes out, the review is over, the study's over. The recommendations are there. And now we can say, "Yeah, that looks good. Let's just go with that." But we have to make sure what we've decided to go with meets what the town is ready to budget for the future. And I think by all of us getting together as stakeholders, we'll share in the responsibility of the outcome of whatever we do for a review. There is probably a dozen different options. I've also talked to former chief Struble. There's different options that we're all aware of rather than the Southington study, the Manchester study. There's accreditations that we can do. And there's a whole bunch of different things that we can work on together as stakeholders for the Fire Department. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. You know, I appreciate your comments. And again, when I say that you've always been very respectful and forthcoming with information, I mean it sincerely. You know, and you understand my desire for more data because we've had this discussion in the past. But I, you know, obviously, I wouldn't, I don't think any study could be undertaken without, like, all the stakeholders being involved, right? And I think if you're going to commit to a study, I think this, this town and this council and the mayor's office certainly are taking some hard looks at some things that were maybe a little bit different in the past. And I think we're having some discussions on education, some discussions on town buildings, some things that we haven't really undertaken in the past. So if it's, you know, I mean, I'm not committed to any cost, but it's, you know, obviously within reason. But it's, you have to, if there's an issue, we have to fix it, you know? You have to, if the study says there's a problem that needs to be addressed, then you need to address it. So my commitment is to the, you know, to the fire service and so on. Anyone else on the council? All right, Madam Clerk, kindly call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we call the roll, any members of the public care to speak on this topic?
Harmanji?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tatta?
Yes.
Testa?
Marone.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, so the last remaining item is on the Fair Rent Commission interview process. So I was going to set this up for last week, and then we had some schedule issues. So I guess, in speaking with Janice about how to conduct these interviews, I think what we're going to do is they're all going to be in executive session, and we'll do them virtually. So what I'm looking for is, what I'd like to do, and this is really at the, you know, whatever the council feels is appropriate. But I think, sort of like, you know, in business, when you do an interview, you have sort of a standard rubric of questions that you ask every candidate, to try to keep them consistent. So that's kind of what I'd like to do. And if there's folks that are interested, if you're not interested in interviewing candidates, no disrespect at all. But if you're interested, I'd like to kind of find out who's interested, and then we can start looking at schedules. And what I'd like to do is offer the candidates different times to, like, say, sign up for a time slot, and then we jump on the virtual, do the interviews, then we can have a discussion at the end, you know, and make recommendations and so on. Take good notes, make recommendations, et cetera, et cetera. Does anyone have any questions on that process? Counsel Fishbein.
Yeah, I just question the executive session aspect because, you know, the result of that is more than likely going to end up with someone being appointed to a board or commission and the public not knowing what they answered to a question. And the other applicants not knowing how somebody answered a question. So I understand there's pros and cons, but usually openness and transparency is a good thing. So I'm just, I'm flagging that as we have the discussion.
No, I think that's a great question. So the balance of transparency versus the ability to interview in a way that the later candidates don't understand all the questions that were asked, you know, sort of tip your hand to the initial candidate. So my thought was that you would maintain a record, you know, you'd have an executive session, but you could certainly maintain a record of the questions and answers, or at least a summation, that could then be, you know, part of the public record of that topic. What I'm trying to avoid is having us go freestyle, you know, in terms of asking questions and, like, sort of delving into, you know, matters that aren't really related to the job, if that makes sense.
Well, if anything, I think having it not be public may lend more towards that. But not that anybody up here would do that, but, you know, I just, I don't see that as a bar. But certainly, you could have the applicants here. I don't know how many people we're talking about. I forget how many people are supposed to be...
I think there's 10 or 12.
I mean, you could have, like, staggered, and the only person who could be in the room is the individual who's being interviewed. Everyone else is out in the hallway, like we do for executive session. And, you know, but then I guess filming it would be difficult without the microphones, because the microphones project. So we are discussing.
No, no, it's all good, all good points. And so my other thought was, the reason I liked the virtual is so to try to get everyone in here on the same night, to get 12 candidates or whoever in here, or I think it's 10 candidates on the same night, is going to be rather difficult. But I wanted to give everyone a chance to interview. So I thought if I put the slots out there and people could fill in, you know, 10 out of whatever, how many slots over three nights.
But then why can't you do Zoom and do rooms? You put everybody in a room, and then you bring them in for their interview.
So if each interview is 10 to 15 minutes, and you have 10 people, that's...
You slate them, everybody's got, you know, if they...
I'm okay with the one-night idea.
Seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, and then...
Especially Zoom is more accommodating. So I'm okay with the one-night idea. I guess I would leave that up to, if people that wanted to be on the interview, it could be the nine of us, or if certain folks wanted to be on the interview committee, we wanted to make it a committee-type of thing, then...
I doubt you're going to be able to do all of these people in one night.
I agree.
So, and not everybody's going to be available on one particular night, right? So if you have four different nights, and let's just say there's 12 people being interviewed in total, you have four slots each night. And then on that night, four people go to the room, you as the chair, pull that person over to the main questioning room. And then, that's not executive session, that's public.
Well, I thought as we wouldn't let the other candidates observe the interview of the people before them.
Well, they, they wouldn't be able to see it because they wouldn't be able to go to the room. Are you saying the technology is such that because we're broadcasting, we'd be broadcasting on two channels, we would be broadcasting on the actual Zoom and the YouTube? And that's the problem?
No. My thought was not to show them interviews at all on television.
Yeah, that's the problem that you're saying. Because we would be, if it was a public meeting, then you would be interviewing the person on Zoom, but the other people that are in the waiting room could be watching the live feed.
Well, no, because you would lock the room. From a technical perspective, you'd lock the room, and then you would allow them in at the time that you wanted them to interview.
Okay. I'll defer to everybody else.
Does that make sense? Mr. Regan?
He's going to have holograms of everybody available.
Help me, everyone. You're my only hope.
I understand the basic gist of it. I think you give people two different types of timeframes over the course of two days. Pick your own slot. We could easily come up with something along those lines. And it works for all of us as part of the process, making it public. I mean, I'll defer to you as part of that process. But from a technology-wise standpoint, I mean, if you're the 10th person and you've just heard the last nine people parrot the same thing, you know, I don't think we're getting useful results out of that individual.
Agree, yeah.
So, you know, doing it in an executive session-type format in Zoom or similar technologies would probably work the best.
You can, and I don't know, we've never done this before, but I'm suggesting a hybrid. Can, and I don't know, we've never done this before, but I'm suggesting a hybrid. Can we interview, because the purpose of executive session, one of the purposes is the public is not there to ask questions, and here we have an alternative motive also. Can we film, since we're doing it virtually, the executive session-
For later use.
And then broadcast it? The what?
So I know executive, one of the specific exceptions to, or one of the specific reasons for executive session is interviews. So I was thinking of, along those lines. Jerry, is it permissible to tape an executive session to show it at a later date? I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Yeah, because that's my concern, is the, if you tell the candidates you're in executive session.
The purpose of executive session is to get you out of FOI. If you more disclose than less disclose, I, I don't, I don't see that being a problem. So, anyway.
I understand your perspective. Yeah, I'm not, yeah, yeah. I'll defer to Jerry. We'll see, or to Mr. Ferrer, we'll see what he comes up with. All right. Okay, so if no one has any objections to that, then is there, who wants to be on the interview committee?
I will.
Is it a committee, or is it?
I'll, I'll just invite everyone.
I said I would never do a, I said I would never do a committee again.
No, go ahead, Chris. You have something to say.
No, as far as, I mean, let's, let's open it to everybody, and it's optional.
Yep. Okay, perfect.
No committee.
All right. I have all the information I need. Thank you very much. Seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.